Okay, yes, it is four o'clock and we're ready to start. I saw Councilmember Robinson. I'm not sure where she is. Okay. Because we're ready to start, I need those of you who are seated to stand up and take Don't do anything with it yet. Take a cup. Councilmember Jimenez, do you have a cup? You will need one. And so there is only one cup left, and that cup is for Councilmember...
Mayor.
No, the mayor doesn't have a cup. Councilmember Robinson is not here. And here is the mayor. The mayor doesn't get a cup. And Councilmember Robinson is here. Okay. Now, what I need you to do... What I need you to do... Councilmember Robinson, do you have a cup?
A cup?
Yes. You will need one. No, that's her cup. No, no, you have to get your own cup. What happened?
Yeah. She said a cup over there.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. Okay, all right, then, fine. All right, then, the mayor is not participating in this. Because I said so. We're gonna first, before we even have the roll call, I want you to open your cup. And Councilmember Robinson, what number did you pull? 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. This is your seat. And Councilmember Zapata, what number did you pick?
I don't know. That's either a 1 or a 2.
Well, you have to look at it. Give it to Councilmember Bena, and she can help you.
Is that a 2?
Yes.
All right.
And your seat is right here. And Vice Mayor, what is your number? And your seat is over here. And Councilmember... And you told me you prefer Bena? Now, tell me again, pronunciation.
Bana.
Bana, okay. Councilmember Bana, what number do you have?
I'm number 6.
Number 6.
I said 6!
I don't believe it. Councilmember Bana picked the seat where she normally sits. And what is yours?
Number 7.
These two... Now, these two people stay where they were. Something happened that shouldn't have happened. Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think we're ready to start. Madam Clerk, you wanna call the roll? No switching the seats, no switching the seats. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bana? Taking a roll call right now?
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Councilmember Jimenez?
She's here, you're here, come on.
Vice Mayor McGlaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Councilmembers Zapata?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here.
Okay. We have prepared an agenda that we need to adhere to broadly. Because this is a special meeting, and we tried to structure it in a way that you are under the Brown Act. I tried to keep it as open as possible, so you could talk about various and sundry topics, but we have to stay within the broad framework, so that council doesn't call us to task. I am sug... First of all, let me remind you, this is your meeting. It is your meeting, it is your agenda, it is your process. What you tell me, what you want to do and how you want to move, my job is to try to just facilitate that. I have strong opinions, and you know that, about many subjects. I will try to keep those to myself. But if I wander and start letting too much bias show, you should raise your hand, and I will try to keep a check on myself. So, what we have suggested, and again, you may change this in any order you like, but what we have suggested is that we start by confirming the consolidated list of objectives under each goal. And we have had some additional objectives submitted since our last meeting. We want to keep this process as open as we can, we wanna keep it as fluid as we can, but I will tell you, we keep, keep, keep adding. I'm afraid we aren't gonna have much direction for the staff with respect to the budget process for this coming year. So with that, keep the ideas coming, but let's keep the process moving without pushing you, without rushing you. Okay. So we have here... No, that's just the agenda. Can we pull up the overarching city goals and then under each goal, because we've done that? Here are the objectives that you have identified for increasing access and quality of housing. Is that the entire list? Seems to me it's longer. No, it's longer than that. Yeah, okay. But you can... We can only see so much at a time. You wanna run through that just very quickly? And I'll be brief. So the objectives you have, and the question is, do you want to add anything to this? And I think we did receive from Councilmember Robinson and maybe from Councilmember Jimenez, you had some additional thoughts on this, right? Maybe not under that goal, but I know you sent something, some additional comments?
I sent two things.
Okay.
One of them was just wanting to recognize that some of these things are duplicative.
Oh, yes.
That this list has not been fully consolidated. Some of these things are not objectives, but rather broad categories that are not whatever. So I kind of sent a revised list that nested topics, you know, under things that were not goals, and consolidated where it was the same thing being said with slightly different language. Number 2, I also sent, there I felt like were some really important things that were left out of number priorities, number 5 and number 6.
Okay.
Number 5 especially, we did not put on our list of things, things like addressing the recommendations of the audit.
Okay.
Which I feel like it should be included in the priorities, and there are some other things like that.
Right.
Like, you know, getting the amount of money we need for the paving index to be increased over time, so it's at the optimum level. Because that's going to... There's only so much bandwidth, right?
Yeah.
So we need to make sure that when we're considering our priorities, that we have the things that are gonna take up bandwidth included, and the things that we definitely need to be moving on.
Mm-hmm.
And so I wanted to include that list of things.
Okay. Then let's see. We have that. I need to point to the staff. If we can bring that up... Do we have Councilmember Robinson's? I got that before we sent the agenda out, so I think the clerk may have that. Can we bring it up?
It's on the website as an additional document.
I'm over mic'd here.
Patrick, you know it is.
And do you want to start with just Goal 1, or with how... What you're suggesting with Goal 1? Because some of the things you mentioned, I think, were Goal 5. You wanna wait until we get to Goal 5 for that part, or...
There's two different things. One of them...
Oops, there's two different things. Okay.
One of them, there's two different kind of issues that I was wanting to raise. One of them was that the list that we have in the agenda, the main list...
Yes.
Has things that are duplicative and kind of using slightly different language to say the same things.
Mm-hmm.
So I combined those things, and I wanted to see if we could work from the consolidated list...
Sure.
And see if people were okay with that. That's one. And then the second thing was that there was additional things, especially under Goal 5, and a couple under Goal 6, like we didn't put on there the transition to electrified fleet under the climate and... Or under the sustainability thing, which I felt like we need to have it in there. That's the thing that's moving.
Let me ask you a process question to get both of those up there. Do you want to talk about your suggestion for clarification of things under Goal 1 first? Because I think if we start talking about Goal 5 and Goal 6, I'm not sure we're gonna...
Yeah, Goal 1 first.
Okay. Is that... Is that okay with everybody? Yes, Council... Mayor?
That's fine with me. I just...
Oh, you might? I'm over mic'd.
It's... It's... So I'm fine with that, but can we just, as you were starting to do, just for the sake of the public who wasn't there at the previous meeting, just state the six goals, the headlines, so people know what they are?
Yeah, is that okay? We can do that very quickly. Okay, can we bring up the six goals? We have them here, but can we bring them... I can read them, I guess, yes. These are what we... We, what you define. I will own them, too. The overarching city council goals. One is to improve, and this is not in order priorities, goals are not prioritized. Goal 1 is to improve access and quality of housing and to reduce homelessness. Goal 2 is to increase revenue and improve economic development. Three is to improve the quality of life and community health. Four is improve public safety. Five, strengthen the city's internal infrastructure. And six, address shoreline issues and ecological sustainability. And those... The public can see this as we're going through the agenda? As long as it stays up? They can see that? Good. Yes. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Doria spends an awful lot of time going over the goals and objectives, and she actually did a fantastic job of categorizing them, you know, nesting them so that it made sense when we looked at it. And she also identified which ones were in progress and which ones were aspirational. And I believe that that's information that needs to be upfront, and I was hoping... I was thinking that we were going to be using Doria's outline.
We're going there now. Isn't that what we said?
I don't know, we haven't decided yet.
Oh, no, no. I thought there was agreement. I thought there was agreement that we would start with Goal 1, okay? And that we would talk about the consolidated list that you put together?
Yes.
And the refinement of the objectives, and you're right, we have objectives in there, we have strategies in there, we have priorities in there. But I thought... I thought that's what we said. We're gonna go with Doria's suggestion, starting with Goal 1, right?
Okay, well then...
Is that... Wait a minute.
Let's just move...
You...
No, let's just move. I think that... I think what maybe was throwing off Mayor Martinez is that we weren't seeing the documents that I shared.
Well, that's what... That's what I asked the clerk.
And the document's not in the packet.
And maybe for the benefit of the other council members that I can't talk to...
Here.
I was going through the list, and I saw in the list... No, that's not...
Is it this?
This is my additional items. That's number 2, the things that were not previously included. Did you?
Let me just ask you something.
I couldn't email it to you, because I couldn't.
Let me just ask you something. One of the things... I'm not sure where we got that, but I know we had this issue the first time around. You're still under the Brown Act, and I got some material, first time around, I can't speak to this one, I have to go back and look. And we got that material after the clerk had put the agenda together and published it. And then that's the problem. But that may not... Seems to me we got your stuff before that.
Yeah, I made the deadline that you gave me.
Yeah, okay.
So I wanted just to say for the benefit of all the council members that I couldn't speak to beforehand. So as I was going through the list, I was seeing that we had sometime... In some cases, like two or three items that were actually the same item with maybe one or two different words. And I didn't think that that was gonna be helpful in... When we go to a process of putting up votes, because it's literally the same thing with like a word missing or not.
But are we gonna... I'm getting lost.
So hold on.
I thought we're going now, is to your list.
This is not my list.
That's not your... Oh, is that not it?
This is... This is different. So I said that there was two separate things. One of them was that I wanted to add to the list, things that you see here, complete all audit requirements, the city can be removed from the audit list. This is additional things that we didn't get to include in the last session.
Right.
But I felt like they were super important for us to consider, because the city being under an audit and having these audit requirements is a huge time requirement in order for us to service that, and we should be taking into consideration in terms of the allocation of staff time. So I felt like it needed to be on the priority list of number 5. And there's other things under that, too, like creating a plan to resolve and bring under fiscal control unfunded liabilities. That's been something looming in the city for a very long time, all the unfunded liabilities, and we haven't had time to focus on it to have a good plan to deal with it. And so this list that you have included is great, and it is additional items to Priority 5 and Priority 6. This is not my proposed reorganization of the list that takes out duplicates and nests things. That's a separate thing.
And you did send us that, right?
I shared that with you as well.
Okay.
Yes, that list...
So I have a suggestion, if I could.
I'd like to explain something before that.
Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, yes.
So the list that Doria created...
Which list?
Well, the...
Because that's where I'm getting... Kind of getting lost.
The... Okay, the restructuring of the goals and objectives.
Yes.
That was sent to me, because I'm the mayor, and so city manager and you looked at it, and we discussed it, and with... And I said, "Great work, Doria," and I was under the impression that we were going to use it. And when I came here, I was, you know, thinking that it would be part of the material, but...
Let me ask if we may go to Vice Mayor and then to Councilmember Zapata, and then I'm gonna see if we can bring that up somehow, so everybody can see it. Because I'm looking at one of the things that I did see that's in the agenda packet, but the other one looks like it's not there, the larger...
So what I was suggesting is that on the issues of Priority 3, 5, and 6, that Doria had some additional things, that we wait until we get to those, and, you know, I think they're all great, by the way. But on this other point, which is the revised listings, if she sent it to the mayor and Chassa and you, Henry, can someone get it?
Yeah, that's what I was...
That's what you're saying. So we're on the same page, yeah.
Okay. Yes. Councilmember Zapata.
I didn't see the list, but I... As I was going through the paperwork here, I do see that staff is on the notes section that they do say, for example, number 22, "Consider combining with number 15," and they say others, number 14, it says, "Please consider combining with number 3 and number 8." So they are making some sug... And I'm not sure these are the same suggestions that Councilmember Robinson gave, or they might be separate, but if they are, then we might already have the document in front of us combined.
Well, but I wanna go back to Councilmember Robinson's. I wanna respect the work that people did. And I can't explain why the second... It looks like one of them got in here and the other one didn't. But what I wanna do is see if we can pull the one that didn't get in the packet up on the screen. Is there... Is there some way we can do that? And I cannot answer that question. I have no idea. I do not put your agendas together or your packets together. I don't understand that process. We can do that?
I didn't know that.
Okay. Now let's make sure, let's confer with Councilmember Robinson that we're pulling up the right document. Just while we're doing that, I told you that I have biases. I am quite comfortable disclosing what they are. One of them is not to keep your material from the council. I have no interest in that. If you send it, I send it, unless you tell me, and I'm gonna tell all of you this. If you say this is confidential, then if you want them to see it, you send it. Henry's not sending it. Okay? All right. And that's not the case with Councilmember Robinson's documents. And I do remember there were two, actually, two separate ones. Okay. They're gonna try to bring that up in just a second. And then maybe we can merge that... Everybody can participate in that process when we get to it.
I would like to say that Councilmember Robinson's document contains everything that was in the previous document, it's just reorganized.
Okay.
And it's also separated by items that are in progress and items that are aspirational.
Sure.
The reason that we didn't send it out to everyone was because of the Brown Act, and that's why.
I don't wanna... I don't want to rest on that. I know that was an issue with the first time we did this, because I flagged it and I said, "You've already printed the agenda, and you're actually adding a new subject area." I remember I said that to somebody.
Right, but it's not new.
I don't think that was the case with this one, though.
Right.
I'm not sure. I don't think it was. So I don't wanna say it was the Brown Act, but as I recall, both of those came close together.
Well, no, I'm talking about previous to this meeting.
Sure. Okay. All right. They're searching for it. And as Councilmember Zapata said, as we discuss that now, of course, the floor is open for other people to make suggestions about further refinements or consolidation or comments.
So maybe I'll just make one more comment and leave it.
Yes.
So one of the reasons why I spent time marking the things that I knew about that were in progress...
Yes.
Because again, that's time, that's staff time, that's already been committed to moving certain things.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to take that into consideration. It's not... Just because it's not our priority doesn't mean that staff isn't also gonna be working on these things that are already in motion.
That's right.
And I feel like we need to be cognizant of that when we... When we are doing this, you know, because a number of these items, you know, they're already a part of people's workloads.
Sure. And bandwidth is an issue. I mentioned that the last time. And some of these, as you're going through them, I know that although you put them up as goal... Specifically, as some of the objectives, that work has been going on for some of those for some time. And the other thing that I'm thinking about while we're pulling it up there is some of these are going to be one year, some of these are gonna be two-year, some of those are gonna be three-plus years.
Yeah.
And, you know, when we go through them, we can say, you know, what the expectation is. And because it's three-plus years, doesn't mean you wait three-plus years to start. It just means that in order to move it, it may take that long to see some real results. Councilmember Bana?
Thank you. I do appreciate what Councilmember Robinson has done. I haven't seen any of that.
Yes.
I have no objection. If work has been done and makes it easier for us, awesome. But to... Just for me to feel included in the process, it would have been nice to make a motion and pass it by everyone to follow.
Okay, that's a process suggestion. Okay. All right. And what we will commit to, again, what am I talking about? We, I don't put your agendas together. If we get it before the deadline, unless you say it's confidential and not to be shared, we'll send it out with the material. Yes?
Yeah, however this process is gonna move forward, it is good what Councilmember Robinson brought up, that some of these things may already be in motion, so I mean, would be helpful for me as we're working our way through the agenda and just kind of listing these things out, if staff can help out with just a little bit of participation, just say, "Well, this is in motion here and there," and then it can make it clear for us on, okay, if that's already in motion, then what should take priority? So my suggestion was gonna be if the list is still the list, it was organized a different way, until we get that pulled up, if we could just start looking at the list as is for right now, still get that pulled up as it's already organized, but just get that feedback on which of these things are in motion, which of these things are still lingering, and do we wanna make this a priority?
Sure. And I think the staff can be hoping to have...
Can I offer an example of why I did what I did with the list?
Yeah.
Using housing as the example?
Mm-hmm.
So on the full list, we had, you know, the whole category of goals, number 1, which was improve the qual... Improve, what was that?
Access, I think it was. Was it improve access or...
Increase access and quality of housing.
Increase access and quality of housing. And then we have housing relocation services, increase housing supply, which is just restating the goal. Increasing housing supply is like, in my opinion, is restating, you know, increasing access. Reducing homelessness, which is very different, creating paths to homeownership, expanding tenant eviction services, implementation, and then the list goes on, and there's more kind of duplicative things, right? And so what... And there's more, right? And so one of the items, I'm wondering if some of these things are missing. So for instance, the item that says support the advancement of two to three key low-income housing developments, on the list are also two or three low-income housing developments, in Eastern Village, whatever. So I was like, let's nest those.
Okay.
Because it's the same thing.
I think we're kind of spinning our wheels.
Henry, may I just...
I'm ready to suggest, if we can't bring it up, if we can simply make copies of that document...
So Henry, just for clarification?
Yes.
So staff are printing 10 of the...
Good.
The second document that was provided by Councilmember Robinson.
Good, okay. Good, I was just here to suggest.
And what I recall receiving on email was the email that was... So I did receive the consolidated list via text to a Google Doc, but originally what we were corresponding on email was pertaining to that particular email, which I shared with the clerk's office. So I think there's been... I also sent an email to Henry, which I see the mayor with this on.
And I think I forwarded that.
And, yeah, so...
But I think we...
Yeah.
Process, and you can throw me out of here.
We were chatting, and but we were... I was also like creating a formal email.
Why don't we just pause for a minute?
Okay.
And everybody have the document in front of them. And what, as we go through that, of course, everybody will have a chance to say, "Yeah, I think that's fine, but yeah, I think we should combine these or delete that one or whatever," so that we have full participation in the process. Okay? Should only take a minute to copy that. Well, I don't know about that. They may have had to go back to City Hall.
There it is! Woo-hoo! It's in the hall.
Is this it?
That's it.
Okay, so they brought it up. All right, now, but can everybody see that?
Figure.
Are we... Are we also getting a hard copy?
Yes, she's getting... She said they're making 10 copies. But maybe we can... I'm blocking the screen, yeah.
So if I can just describe what you're seeing here, and we can walk through it, and you can tell me if you wanna do this or not. So one, there is... I did include the things that I wanted to add, but I put them in a different color. So when you see text that's in, I think, purple or blue, those are my additions, and they were not a part of the first meeting, FYI. Second point, IP means that it's in progress. It's something that staff is already working on, there's people assigned to, you know, there's different things happening to different degrees, but it's in progress. A is aspirational. As far as I know, there isn't some particular staff, you know, assigned to it or moving it forward. And I might have that wrong, we might, we need to change an A to an IP if I didn't know about something.
Exactly.
But I wanted to, to show it because, as you see, under housing, there's a lot of stuff that's already moving, right? That's already assigned to staff. And the other thing I did was I took where we had things that were very vague, like increased housing access, and then we also had a separate line item, infill development. I added to increase housing access, especially infill development, because it's a descriptor. It's not, it's not in and of itself a goal, right? And avoid the share line. So I combined all of those into one line, and under that, all of the different objectives that actually helped to increase housing access, right? Because there's increasing housing access is one thing, and then increasing housing quality is another thing that has to do with rental inspection programs. Preventing housing instability is another thing, which is the, the housing relocation services, the paths for homeownership, expanding tenant eviction services, all those things help make it so that people can stay in their homes. And then the last one, reducing homelessness, really is a whole world of things that actually has its own strategic plan. And then under that strategic plan are all of these things that were listed separately. And so I just felt like it was important for us to see that that strategic plan, we just approved it.
Yeah.
And all of these items that are listed are actually already in that strategic plan, and we just approved the plan. So I wanted it to be really clear that that's in motion, you know?
Can we get a set about?
And so, what we have in this new kind of organization of these things is, like, one, two, three, four subcategories that are all under this particular goal. And then you can clearly see what is already in motion and what is new.
Can I suggest that we go through it? And then people can comment as we do that. Does everybody have a hard copy of it? Okay?
Me.
Yes, process, yes.
My suggestion about the process?
Yes.
Because I think what Doria has done is excellent, and we should use it. But then what if I had done something and Melvin had done something? I think the most important thing is just practicing the right process here. So, putting it into a motion and all decide, I think we need to start practicing the democratic game of democracy and move. To me, the way the process goes is most important.
I'll move. I was going to move the item with, okay, with the understanding that we might make revisions along the way. But the motion is to go with Doria's document.
I say conduct.
It's a discussion piece, yes. And there's a second to the motion? Okay, city clerk has to-
I say conduct.
On the motion issue, the mayor is chairing.
Yes.
I'm not doing motions.
Yes, okay. So, there's been a motion in the second to use this document with the understanding that it's open to revision. So, roll call? Actually, let's just, all those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous.
And the clerk has that, that was official motion, you are in a formal meeting.
Clarification on who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin made the motion, Councilmember Jimenez made second.
And unanimously approved. Okay.
Mr.?
So, yes, Councilmember Zapata.
May I ask a question? I'm not sure if this question is for you or for the mayor. In terms of process, are we also, as we're going down the list, are we also going to be looking at prioritizing and also setting a timeframe? I think somebody might have mentioned it. So, as we go along, let's just, and, Doria, thank you for this as well, I, I appreciate it. So if we look at Nystrom, I'm just making up one here, Nystrom Village, right? If we look at Nystrom Village, it's already in progress, are we putting a timeframe to that, saying is this going to be completed by next year? It's priority number five.
That was my suggestion.
So what is, so that, as we talk, we can figure out.
You may do it however you want, but my thought was that it should go through this, because it's a lot of stuff. I think by consolidating some of this and clarifying it, it'll help that prioritization. But at some point, we do need to say, of these 20, how are we prioritizing those, and which of those do we think can be achieved in one year? You're going to need a lot of help from the staff.
And then the other-
Which of these, two years, three-plus years?
The other piece that I think we did-
And who's going to do it?
We need to take into consideration as we're going through it, is one staff time. So maybe figuring out, like, item number one is going to require, and we have to figure out maybe a number, so between one and, I was making up, between one and five. So, one is low staff time, five is high staff time. So we can say this item's going to be a number three with staff time. So we know how to allocate. And then, does it need budget? Or does it not? Because in a couple of weeks, we're going to be discussing budget. So that way we know which items from here are we going to have to put money towards. Some things have already been budgeted, they're in progress, some of them do not. So at the end, if all of them need money, then we're going to have to reprioritize and save in the next year, because we only have so much money. So I think we should take into consideration staff time, money, and figuring out how do we mark each one? Low money, high money, or whatever.
Maybe a process suggestion is, and all of that is what I generally recommend, that when you go through it, you prioritize it, you decide what's one year, what's two, what's three-plus years. And then, whether or not you have adequate current resources, and staff may or may not be prepared to answer that, what additional resources are needed, they certainly may not be able to answer that here today in terms of additional dollars. But then at the end, it's going to be, we've established these goals, these objectives, who's going to do it? When is it going to get done? What kind of resources are needed? How are you going to track it? And how are you going to report? Okay? All right, can we go? We need to get through the list, or it'll be five o'clock in a minute. Okay, so, we have the suggestion from Councilmember Robinson, and this is the grouping of it, to make sure we have collaborative process, that everybody has a chance to have input. As you read through this, are there any additional comments? And I, you all have this in front of you now, so you can take a quick look at it. So, under increased housing access, is there, and I think all of these things under that were things that got on the list from the last meeting. Councilmember Robinson, I don't think you added anything to that. Those were on the original, as I recall. Correct me if I'm, so, so you see what's there. Is there anything else people want to put on that list? Okay? We're not going to redo the list, but we want to make sure we have an open and collaborative process. Open up public land to construct new housing. And four, aspirational and in-progress, and we don't know, we will need staff to help us with some of that, because some of these, they may know, because some of this has been going on for a long time. Mr. Mayor, and then Councilmember Zapata.
If I might, I, I think we could move a lot faster if we begin by considering the aspirational ones, which are things that we want to add on to the load already given. And then, and then, and then we can look at the aspirational ones and consider which of those have priority. Because the aspirational ones are extra load that we're putting on to staff, and, and, as we see what they are, we know that we're asking staff to do more, and then we can prioritize those in terms of what's important to us as, as a, as a council. And then we can start weeding those down according to how much time the in-progress is already taking.
Okay. Mayor has a suggestion on the floor.
May I ask a question?
Councilmember Bana.
So we are on the topic of housing. One of the items I think the city should consider, I don't know if you're going to allocate budget to it or not, but keep in mind, is the fact that we don't want mom and pop, housing providers be replaced by corporations.
But be replaced by what?
Be replaced by corporations.
Oh, oh. Well, that's something you can discuss and decide how you want to deal with that, I think.
Yeah, maybe more a matter of policy than budget.
Were you offering something to clarify that?
So, under preventing housing instability?
Yes.
I wish I would have numbered these, I'm sorry. Increasing accountability in the rent program by collaborating, collaborating more with small landlords, I think was one of the things that you added. Is that speaking to that, or does it need, do you need more than collaborating with small landlords?
I think that's good enough. It may need a bit more than the rent program, but yeah, it's okay.
The rent program, the rent program actually responded back with an email that I'll share with council, essentially indicated, indicating that they are a separate entity. So I think we should be thoughtful about our request of the rent program. That was what was communicated from the executive director.
So maybe we should eliminate a rent program and think about increased accountability.
By collaborating more with small landlords?
And if I-
But that-
Mayor, Henry and Mayor, I just, a point of clarification, staff cannot, at this juncture, complete all of the in-progress items with the current staff that you have, as well as the staff that we're trying to hire. So as a point of clarification, I just want to be thoughtful regarding our colleagues and what they're able to do, so that everyone is clear.
Good comment, and I keep mentioning bandwidth, and I think Councilmember Robinson did too, so you got to help me go through these, let's remember these vacancies, and I, I, I think people, I'm going to keep, I'm going to make sure people keep that in mind. Mr. Mayor, and then Councilmember Willis.
So, with an understanding of, of our city manager's evaluation of the bandwidth, which is that staff cannot even complete what's in progress with the staff that's available, I think it's still important to go through the aspirational so that staff knows the intent of the council. And then after that, then maybe we should talk about prioritizing what, what is in, in progress.
Councilmember Robinson. And you all have to help me, because you know what I did last time. You moved now.
A little to your left, too.
Yeah, I really, I really agree with that, with what, what we just said. I think that we're not going to, I don't think our intention is to stop anything that's already in progress, and be like, we don't want to do that anymore. No metro walk, no mayor, it's like, we're not doing that. So what we're really considering are the things that are not already in motion, and I think that we need to review them. I think we need to be really fair, and we need to vote on them in terms of priority, like, in order to prioritize them. And then, and then we need to actually leave, like, work with staff to understand what is possible and what is not possible in terms of staff time.
Mr. Mayor had a suggestion, and I don't want to lose it unless the rest of you are in agreement. And let me just restate it before we go to Councilmember Zapata. The mayor's suggestion was that we go through this list, and as we go through it, and if you think something is not aspirational or something else, that's the time to say it. But I think what the mayor was suggesting is let's go identify what, and you're the ones who decide whether it's aspirational, and that we prioritize those. Or those, those then are not a major focus at this point, the aspirational ones. I think that was the suggestion.
My suggestion was to go through the aspirational.
That's what I thought. Okay, let's do that. Councilmembers, unless there's objection. Councilmember Zapata, and then Councilmember Bana. Bana and what?
Actually-
I can't, I can't help.
Yes.
My politics are showing.
Well, then, let me help you. Councilmember Willis.
You're going right. Oh, that's your left, actually.
I mean, I don't necessarily want to call this an addition, maybe necessarily expanding, because when I'm looking at the bullet point that says, open up public land to construct new housing, I'm also thinking about collaborating with local and statewide community land trusts to get more community-controlled housing, similar, because I get concerned about housing currently being bought up by the investor market, and then rent starts skyrocketing, and, you know, I'm looking more towards community ownership, too. So just expanding on open up public land, constructing new housing, and just saying, like, collaborating with local and statewide community land trust organizations.
Okay, let's get that up there. And Vice Mayor? Councilmember Jimenez? Zapata, and then Councilmember Bana, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I was just trying to figure out, I was just going to look at the first A, which was the plan for housing, I was just going to go down the list, but I also think if we go down the list, also kind of maybe cross-referencing with what staff already did, because some of these already have notes, like inventory of housing, which is not the very first one, but that one, staff says it's already a Richmond code. So it's no longer an A, it should be an IP.
In progress.
In progress.
So create an inventory of housing is an IP?
And, and, and let me try to remember the order. And I think it's really important for the staff to weigh in as we're going through these, because they are closest, actually, to many of these issues in terms of what's happening on them. And now I've forgotten the order, Councilmember Bana, and then-
Actually, it was Zapata then Bana.
Yeah, I, I make it, I make it quick. So, I'm thinking somehow we should say short-term or long-term. I, I don't know how, because some of them are very important, but we would like to plan long-term. They may not need immediate budget, they may need policy planning, some of them are short-term and urgent. I don't know how we're going to do that.
Is that for the aspirational ones, or just all of everything?
For everything, for everything.
Okay, short-term, long-term, and that's an idea, and Vice Mayor, don't let me forget that, Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
I would like us to keep better track of when people raise their hands. If somebody could write down the queue-
The mayor's trying to help me here.
I will be doing that now.
Okay, please do. Okay, thank you. So my comment is on what is stated as aspirational under reduce homelessness, where it says create, provide, connect services for the unhoused community. I think we have that in progress. I think we have to get more services and more connection of services, but there are a fair amount of services that we've already, that we've already contracted and that are continuing as we speak, so maybe that's an IP.
I would like to suggest that, that we change the aspirational to in-progress as we come to them, otherwise we're going to be jumping around from, from item to item as people look at their preferences. So, so, and for process, I think, as I said before, we should look at the aspirational, categorize them, or prioritize them, then look at the in-progress, prioritize them. And after we prioritize, or maybe before prioritizing them, we can look at, at, at time, you know, are they short-term or long-term? That will help us prioritize.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Zapata.
Will you put your hand down? I forgot the order.
Can we just, thank you, Mr. Mayor, can we just define, so that we're on the same page, so we're prioritizing, what does it mean, short-term, long-term, one year, two year, three year, four year? If we all come to a, a set number, also prioritizing, because it's going to be different prioritization for everyone, maybe, so figuring that piece out, what does priority mean? And that the timeframe, what does that mean? Staffing, what does that mean? And then funding, what does that mean? So we could all be in the same place.
I, I think, if I, if I might, I, I think what we want to do is to look at our aspirations. We need to think about the kind of city that we want, and then from that, we figure out what we should be prioritizing. And once we prioritize them, then we can reprioritize them based on cost, time, and it just makes sense to me to do it that, in that manner.
I think Councilmember Robinson-
Yes.
Was next. Will you put your hand down?
Yeah, so I think, you know, so that we have good process, like Councilmember Bana was saying, Bana, Bana?
Bana.
Bana, Bana.
I want to keep the Bana straight.
I'm confused. Bana was saying that when you have, when you want to make a change in terms of whether it's aspirational or IP, just make a motion, so that we can say whether or not we agree, and we can vote on it right then and get it over with. I'm total agreement. I was going back and forth on that one, I was like, eh, we want to do more, and so I don't know. So anyway, if we could just make a motion and then we can get through the list, I think we should think about this in steps. I think that the first step is really making sure that we're all in agreement on what's aspirational and what's in progress.
Oh, no, no.
Step one, let's be really, really, really disciplined and just get through that, you know, on all of the different categories. And then we circle back and work on, I, I personally believe we should then prioritize the aspirational by voting, like, we only get a certain number of votes to vote on things, and we can decide on how we're going to vote when we get there. But let's first, step one, just be in agreement on what's aspirational and what's in progress. Step two, come up with a voting progress and vote. I honestly believe that we do not have the time, nor do we have all of the information to properly know how long and how much money and all those things these things are going to take today. I don't think we're going to be able to make those assessments accurately. So I feel like we should try to get through the first two things where we-
Councilmember Jimenez, and then I am going to suggest we go to the mayor's suggestion and go through the aspirational ones. Yes?
Yeah, so-
And, and people can suggest something else is aspirational, too.
Following that, I wanted to ask, because the aspirational is introducing vacancies. I don't know, like, we discussed that previous year, so I want to ask staff if this is something that is in progress or is aspirational, so.
Oh, as we go through aspirational, if it's in, something that's in progress? Staff, okay. I'm going to push you on, or we're never going to-
Henry, I think it's important that the council knows that, that staff spent a great deal of time today providing status updates, that, that was what I thought was requested that we do, is to provide the status and the progress on each of the objectives. And so that is what is provided here in the second column, the B column. And so if, if that's helpful, it is available, and we can call them out if, if wanted.
Yes. There's a lot of information there, and it's very hard to find what we're referring to, so if staff could help us out by letting us know whether it's aspirational or, or whether it is something that staff has in progress, that would speed the process along.
And I, with your approval, I would ask staff to participate in this discussion when we go through what is, what's inspirational?
Aspirational or in-progress?
So can I ask Ned and Lena to come up? Because they're the folks who we've designated to lead this first chapter. If that would be helpful, if they can come to the microphone.
And they can comment from here, but, yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to push you on, or we're going to be here seven o'clock and we're not making much progress. So what I heard was that we're going to first go through the aspirational ones, and we're going to move those, we're going to move those, no, we're not taking them off the list, we're just going to say they're aspirational, and we, once we go through those and everybody agrees, then our focus is going to be on the ones that are in progress or, yeah, they're still on the list.
So can I add, so because we have Lena, I think it would be great for her to kind of truth-check our assumption on the in-progress as well. Because she's here, she knows, and so she could be the one who, you know, says, yes, that's in progress, or no, that is not in progress, you know?
Oh, if it's in her subject area, yes.
Before she does that, can we, the, the last bullet point there on the first big bullet point, plan for housing development along 23rd Street, can we break that into different pieces? Because these are different sections of the city, 23rd Street, San Pablo Avenue, and McDonald Avenue. They shouldn't be all than one, because they're-
Agreed.
Very different.
Okay, is there consensus on that? But, but let me go through these aspirational ones, as the mayor suggested, so we stay on that. So the first one you have up here is collaborate, am I right? Collaborate with local and statewide community land trust organizations. Is that aspirational?
I, I move that we include that with open up public land to construct new housing, which is what I believe Councilmember Willis wanted.
That's what he's attaching it to, I think.
Yes.
So are we gonna vote on each one?
No, the question is whether or not it's aspirational or whether it's in progress.
And this is why Lena is here, so if we can-
Okay, okay, we'll hear that first.
She needs to be mic, I think they're gonna get you on.
Can you hear us?
Yes, right.
So in terms of the public land to construct new housing, so we're currently working with our Housing Fellow to create an equitable disposition policy that is looking at the community land trust, so it is something that's actually in progress.
It's in progress, okay, so we're gonna change that from A to IP. Is that right? Is that what we're doing?
Can we give a thumbs up, Henry, so that everybody, like, is in concurrence?
Thank you, Director Velazquez.
Oh, yes, there is agreement, there's concurrence to do that?
Velazquez.
Yeah, is that all right?
Thank you.
I don't wanna go too fast. Okay, we're going to the next one that has an A by it, and I still haven't gotten to the-
Take inventory of vacant housing.
Introduce, well, yeah, take inventory of vacant housing, public or private, are, that is, have we started anything around that?
So currently, we require-
Item twenty.
I'm sorry.
Item twenty.
Yeah, currently, we require buildings to, that are vacant, to register under the city's vacant property registry. However, it would not account for a single unit in a six-plex or five units in a larger complex, so I think some clarification would be helpful. Is it just available housing units for rent, or are we looking for vacant structures which would be subject to the registry program?
Let me ask you, it's a good clarifying question.
That was my-
Because, yes, Vice Mayor.
That was something I put up there, so I actually think it would be better to say, take an inventory of vacant structures or vacant buildings, because I think that's what I was more referring to.
Were you including land in that as well? I know some cities have done that.
No, no, the land was separate, and I just wanted, because there's a lot of buildings that are empty that we need to do something with, or get code enforcement or whatever.
Then I think we can put that as in-progress.
In progress, as an IP.
And maybe add enforcement, because obviously it's, we require that people register, but there may be some vacant building owners that haven't actually registered, so I think that could be added as one of the outcomes.
So like adding improving enforcement of registration?
That's right in my voice. That's right.
Is that clear now? Okay, pushing on. Introduce a vacancy tax.
Item forty-one.
Item forty-one on your big spreadsheet.
In progress. Vacant parcel tax will be brought to City Council for consideration in fall 2023.
Okay, so it's coming soon.
May I make a comment on that?
Yes, please.
I believe that, that's like a stick policy, we need a carrot policy to go with that. If you have a vacant property, if, if you wanna build it, just to get sewage into it, the sewer system costs around eighty thousand dollars. To get, ispe mud bring water to it, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. So we cannot tax people for not having money. If the city agrees to waive the costs for like until three or after years, when it is built and they can profit from it, then we can impose a tax, because we have the carrot and a stick together, but just imposing tax is unfair.
Just the floor, Council, Vice Mayor.
This is, this is not the space to debate the pros or cons of any of the aspirations. It is a space to decide whether or not it's something we want to consider.
But I'm proposing to complete that.
Should do what?
Provide incentive to build.
You want to add to it?
And introduce vacancy tax. So it should come along with provide incentives to build.
Okay, do you see that, Patrick? I'm having trouble finding where we are. Introduce a vacancy tax, and were you suggesting-
Provide incentives to build.
Provide incentives to build.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have agreement on that?
Is there agreement?
I think, I think we should, it's two separate things. I think like for some of them, it could be because the ones that Councilmember Bana was suggesting, maybe it's just one percent of all of that. When I, when I think about vacancy tax, I always mostly think about the infill vacancy taxes, like that they already have infrastructure and it's there just to, and just, for blighting is really good to have, to be able to have some pressure, so this land start to be developed. So I think maybe it's just kinda like a little bit of a strategy for, it's, it needs an study, it needs more than just make a, a big assumption that everybody will need some subsidy.
Henry, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That we come back with a study session, we did complete analysis with a consultant, and it did have an equity component to ensure that seniors and local residents wouldn't be-
With respect to vacancy?
Right.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I was gonna say maybe we should change the language here, that just to say the explore a vacancy tax and figure out how we, how or if we would wanna move it forward and make sure that includes an equity.
As opposed to introduce a vacancy tax?
Yeah, because that's just like, introduce it with no direction in terms of impact, right?
Explore vacancy, and do you wanna say more with that clarification? Because I think that clarification is important, that the city manager and you were going to suggest.
Follow the process.
Councilmember Willis.
Thank you.
It takes lots of eyes to, to stay on this, too.
I mean, and when it comes to policies, I'm just saying this as a general comment, I think there's gonna be a diversity of opinions on how a policy needs to be framed and implemented, so it doesn't hurt, thank you for staff for all the work that you put in, but also, while taking direction from the conversation and discussion based on what we can do and can't do, it doesn't hurt to have like an A, B, C, D option on like what's the kind of route we wanna take and explore the pros and cons of all those options. It doesn't have to be one shoes fits all, let's explore what we can look at when it comes to policy direction, because there is gonna be a diversity of opinions, not only on this council, but for the general public, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Actually, Councilmember Jimenez, and then, and then I'll speak.
I was going to say-
I'm sorry.
That for the explore a vacancy tax, maybe we can put like including an equity framework for, for implementation.
Okay, I think that if we take the time to discuss the intricacies of the aspirations, we will not get very far. I believe that at this point, we should vote, or we should have it as, as an aspiration, and then all of the, all of the ins and outs are things that we know will be considered when it's brought to staff.
Okay, let me just give you a hope and objective facility point of view. I am trying to encourage that we move this along, but I wanna also make sure that people who did not do what Councilmember Robinson did and want to add a comment or two to those, that we have the space for that, but I agree with the mayor, we shouldn't open it up for big discussion and debate, we'll never move this process. Okay, so where are we now on the next aspiration? The colors, I can drive it.
Before we move on to the other big bullet points, can we move up? Because we've missed one. So we actually put an IP under McDonald Avenue, but that shouldn't have an IP yet, because we have to discuss it. So the bullet point, Plan for Housing Development Along, now we divided those up, 23rd, San Pablo, McDonald, but maybe Lena might be able to shed some light on these three distinct projects, and then we can put an A or an IP.
Okay, all right. We're not gonna debate it, unless you have a clarified comment.
So Lena? Yeah, this is clarification.
So I think with the council's recent action on the Form-Based Code, you know, part of what we were looking at is, you know, incentivizing and removing barriers for development along these corridors. So I think what staff can do is do some educational workshops to talk about the Form-Based Code, how that may help and remove some of the barriers for private property owners. As far as McDonald, 12th and McDonald is one of the key sites, MetroWalk is another key site along McDonald, so those are two city-owned properties that we are working together, Nanette and I, on negotiating those sales with the council's consideration and input. San Pablo and 23rd Street, you know, I think these are areas that we probably need to do more outreach to vacant property owners about options that they have and flipping or developing their parcels.
So Lena, did I, if I heard you correctly, 23rd and San Pablo, that should have an A and McDonald Avenue an IP?
Yes.
Would that be accurate? Thank you.
Okay. Are we next at Housing Relocation Services?
So with this one, the council does have a relocation ordinance, which the rent program is, been the one that's assisting and supporting tenants on. That's municipal code section 6.36, relocation benefits. So some clarification in terms of what specific expansion or modification the council would want would be helpful.
And it's also required under the public housing redevelopment, so we are registering with the rent board with our relocation of Nevin Plaza and Nisham, even though they are onsite relocations.
Okay, so what are we seeing for Housing Relocation Services? That's no longer an A, that's a?
In progress.
IP, okay.
Yes.
All right, okay, we're good? All right, scroll up or down, I'm not sure which direction you go. And again, others, do you have a quick clarifying point, wanna add something quick? We're gonna debate it.
I have a clarifying, just, it might be good to have anyways, but just to make sure. So there's some in there, for example, on the, on the Prevent Housing Instability, there's Tenant Protection and Rental Assistance, and based on the email that Shasta received from the rent board, I mean, that could be a goal for City Council, but we wanna make sure, how do we, are we talking about our own, or, because the rent board says we can't tell them what to do, which we can't, so I just wanna make sure that we have some clarity there.
We have the programs that the City Council is funding with R3F, and, and so we can note that in our, in our follow-up, the specific, they're on the community development website, where we're listing the, the programs that where we're providing emergency rental assistance as well as Housing First funds, as well as the R3F, and so I think one of the things that the council may wanna take into consideration as you're prioritizing ARPA expenditures is if you wanted to provide additional funding, and that was the request that we heard in public comment last week.
Councilmember Robinson, and then Councilmember Bana?
So I wanted to bring that forward on that issue, is I know the rent board has their own world in that, but we, like, like-
City manager.
City manager said, we, we had allocated, I think it was three hundred thousand dollars towards Housing, Housing First, a million for all of the different things, but three hundred thousand in particular for, for relocation services, and that fund is gone. And so if we wanna continue that program that, you know, from all the testimonials that we heard in council, was really helping people stay off the street in the first place, we need to think about that as a priority to allocate.
Councilmember Bana, I'm gonna keep moving you. Councilmember Bana?
Thank you. I think we cannot address homelessness without discussing synthetic drug issue. It's an epidemic in the society, and we need to somehow address it to make sure we address homelessness correctly. I don't know if we can receive services from the county, I don't know what the solution is, is it policy, is it budget, what it is, but I think it should be included and we should look at it.
Okay.
Once again, I, I really feel that, I really feel that, that we're adding things that will be discussed when we either take it or, or, or leave it.
We're gonna try to stay on clarification.
So I would, I would really ask-
In terms of how we're consolidating stuff.
Right, I would really ask council to keep these things in mind as things that will be discussed if this aspiration is one of the aspirations that we choose.
And we're not gonna lose it, we're not gonna lose it. But I wanna keep moving you on, just clarification of what Councilmember Robinson and others have tried to put together with, but if you have additional thoughts, we'll capture those, but I'm gonna keep pushing you. Councilmember Jimenez, you want to speak?
No.
Okay, you got the, you know?
Next one. Let's move on.
What's the next aspiration? Can you read it? I can't see any of that. Emergency shelter, it's on here, but I can't do that either. Okay.
Yeah, I agree that's aspirational. I think additional resources, location, funding would be needed. But one thing I did wanna clarify just above that where it says transitional housing projects, so the Motel Six Home Key Project is permanent supportive housing, so that is not a correct example. But there are, there is one that we're discussing with PAL about a potential youth transitional small cabin community, so that could be as an example of an in-progress project.
Did we get that? Okay, next aspiration, unless there's some comments, Councilmember Jimenez?
So it will be okay for the council to say implement two or three transitional as last permanent housing, or we can say implement two or three permanent houses and implement two or three transitional housing? What will be ideal for the council to, to do?
Comments from the council? Vice Mayor?
So I think we do need to have two to three transitional villages, we also need the permanent supportive, we could have perhaps both, two to three transi, and I think we might end up needing more, but two to three to start transitional villages, and I don't, yes, Home Key Three is one permanent supportive housing, maybe, I don't know if we want to say, you know, try and have two, or I don't know how many, two permanent supportive housing projects, so that would mean one more beyond the Motel Six.
Is somebody else, we're moving on.
Council, Vice Mayor, you're meaning two new ones, because since we do have some, so just two new ones, right?
Two new ones beyond Home Key Three, is that, I mean, I guess we're talking about a number of years, so it's probably dual.
Yeah, I think you're talking about Home Key, Home Key, the Motel Six is one of the two, it would be one of the two, not, not whatever, whatever is existing that is not included in the Home Key is not included in this. You're saying that you want two additional on what's currently existing.
So two to three transitional, transitional village or housing projects, and example, the youth tiny, the ARPAL Youth Tiny Village is in progress, so that's one thing, and I would say two permanent supportive housing projects, and Motel Six is one example. So I don't, I don't know if we want two more, or if we wanna say, start out with just two, including the one we already, hopefully, will, will win the grant on.
All right, again, we-
Okay, I will say, Councilmember Jimenez is the one who suggested this, so I'm, I would like to ask her if she would like to include two more, or just two inclusive of Home Key Three?
I think it will be two or three, two or three housing including Home Key, so it's-
Okay, okay.
Okay, so that's the clarification, all right.
Can we also ask if this is one bullet point or two?
I think it should actually be two, I think it would make more sense, because they're two distinctly different types of housing.
Okay, is there agreement on that? All right, I hear, there's consensus. What is the next aspiration, provide additional emergency shelters for housing?
We just did it.
I'm sorry, what is that?
We confirmed that that was it.
Okay, that's, well, okay, all right, so-
Before we move to the next priority, I just wanted us to roll back through, because this is why I suspected was gonna happen, is that a lot of this stuff is already in motion, so I, I wanna, as we're going through the, the other categories, and, not now, but as we're going through the other categories, think about what is it that we're prioritizing? I mean, because these things are already in motion, right? What is it that we're actually doing? I think there's only two items.
Well, you're doing two things.
Three items that are aspirational.
You're confirming one, that they are aspirational amongst the group.
No, I mean, in terms of like bandwidth, you know, whatever, there's only two that would, and there's, there's a lot on deck right now, and as we heard, the staff is already overwhelmed with their current staffing, so I just wanted to- current staffing, so I just wanted people to keep that in mind, and let's keep moving, but I felt like it was important to point it out.
Okay, did we do, okay, we did, what's the next aspirational one? I'm sorry, what is your one, is it? Increased job training for high school juniors and seniors, I just bolded, so I'm blacked out and I can't read it. Okay, not college-ready. That's listed as aspirational, increased job training for high school juniors and seniors that are not college-ready. Is that aspirational? Councilmember Willis.
So the key term there is increase, because we are already providing job training through our Youth Works program, so juniors, seniors, Youth Works is from 14 to 24, and I know that's also bullet point number five, but it captures high school juniors and seniors in providing them with all sorts of job training, as well as job placement, not just during the summer, but year-round, thanks to additional funding from city council, so we are always looking for additional job sites and ways in which to bring additional young people on board to our Youth Works program, but I do feel like it's in progress, unless there is additional clarification that council can provide that we are not already doing.
Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, I guess in terms of the additional clarification or how to increase, I was thinking more of collabor, being intentionally more collaborative with central labor council if we're not already collaborating with the school districts to actually do assemblies or figure out times in the semester in the middle of their curriculum to actually meet with Richmond juniors and seniors onsite and start offering this in a more intentional way, rather than just waiting for them to come to us. So just kind of going out to them and figuring out the tools and things that we can drag people into is what I was envisioning when I suggested that.
You suggested, we've captured that.
I definitely have that written down, and I do believe staff does do outreach to our high schools, but we can, of course, always do more.
And report more.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I wanted to go back to support implementation of Marantine Academy connected to Kennedy High School, that is connected to the port, and it also addresses the item that we're talking about now.
Okay.
Increased job training for high school juniors and seniors, so they're intertwined, but I think increased job training for high school and seniors would expand more than the Marantine-
You want to put that up there? Just put that up there.
It's-
We have it elsewhere? Do you want to move it? I don't remember that.
It's under the port, the next one.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So you want to combine those?
No, it's not necessary to combine them, because, because the increased job training for high school juniors and seniors would include more than the Marantine-
Right, okay.
But, but that Marantine Academy belongs under the port category, which is, which is-
These are very useful.
Right, which is down there, okay.
We can move it. Okay, all right, what's the next aspiration? Expand vocational training programs?
So expand, once again, is the key term there, because the city, through employment and training, provides vocational training, opportunities and programs, so just in the current fiscal year, we placed 82 residents in vocational training in various industries, from transportation to IT to human resources and administration, and residents through employment and training don't have to pay fees, they can also get additional support while they're in vocational training, and in addition, you have Richmond Build, which has currently graduated its 50th cohort and places individuals in, they have on-the-job training, as well as getting placed and connected with various labor trades.
Okay, so that's in progress.
I feel like it's in progress, but I don't, I would appreciate additional clarity from council if they have any around the expansion component.
Okay. We're going to launch that now.
Can I clarify the bullet point right before we left that at A, increased job training, is that still an A or is that to be an IP?
I believe it's an IP, but I definitely hear Councilmember Willis in wanting us to do some more intentional collaborations at the high school, so we are doing job training.
Because I think to that point, I think that, and I don't want to speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I think when we were putting some of these down is to do more than what we have, so are they all aspirational, because we want to do more? We have good base, good, you know, not even good base, more than a good base of some of these programs, but do we want to do more, I think is the question.
Well, I think the, well, whoever, people can speak, but to increase it suggests that you're already doing it, and the staff has already said that we are doing it, so it's in progress, but I think that maybe the interest is to do more.
Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, I think it was your item.
How about this, because this is already in progress, which I knew elements of this was in progress, I think the next logical step, at least for me personally, is to sit down, meet with staff, see how the program's being implemented, and where there's room for potential input and improvement, so I'll start, take the first step and do a tour of the programming first, and then go build from there, thank you.
Thank you, but having it in progress is sufficient for that?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, is everybody okay with that? Everybody okay? All right. All right, next aspiration, is that develop the port, develop port strategic plan, and that includes offshore wind opportunities, and that's down as aspiration. So is that aspiration, or are we doing something in that area now? Sounds like it's aspiration.
That's a question for staff to clarify.
Yes.
The staff note under 27 says port director hiring in progress.
Okay, so that's tied to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we would be, once we get a director, we will start developing that strategic plan?
I think the port director is its own thing, and that's in progress, and the strategic plan is aspirational.
Yes. They're connected.
And so the strategic plan is aspirational?
Yes.
And the hiring of port director is in progress. We're okay?
Correct.
We're good? All right, pushing on. Hire new staff with appropriate experience to recruit businesses and development of marketing plan. Are we doing things in that area already, or is that going to be a new undertaking?
I think the first two items can be combined together, maybe?
And that would be hiring the new staff to recruit businesses, develop the marketing plan, hire a commercial broker to join economic, to assist, join economic, oh, yes, it does mean that, to join economic development team?
Yes.
Well, are both of those aspirational, I turn to staff, are we doing-
The staff analysis is in progress with HR, and there's two reports that have been completed by HRNA, and so I think that what we'd need is additional resources to assist with implementation.
So those are in progress?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the plans are completed.
All right, so both of those bullets are in progress.
Yes.
Did I say that right, Councilmember Bana? Is that what you intended?
I'm sorry, I'm lost.
Oh, I said that both of those are in progress.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Within the next several weeks, there will be an RFP for a commercial broker as well.
Okay. Did you hear, did anybody hear that?
That's good news.
In the next couple of weeks, okay. Councilmember Jimenez.
They say hire new staff. I hear the plans, and I hear consultants, what is the status of hiring new staff with appropriate experience to recruit businesses? Is this something in progress as well?
Yes, I, my, the beginning of my first statement was that HR, that's in progress with HR.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
With the-
Councilmember Bana.
A request inside parentheses, would city council be informed about the qualification of the people to be hired for those positions?
I would be happy to discuss that with you offline.
Thank you.
Every time council asks me about a hiring decision, that's going to be my response.
Okay, that is an appropriate city manager's response. Okay, next aspiration. Create marketing, will you, do that, I can't read it.
At the last personnel board meeting.
Create marketing communication team, that includes public information officer.
At the last-
Aspirational.
At the last personnel, that's in progress, at the last personnel board meeting, an updated job description for community engagement manager was heard and approved, and so the hiring is in progress.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Councilmember Bana.
I think I requested during gold setting, there was a request for a lobbyist for the city, is that something that's happening, hopefully?
Lilia, would you like to give an update on the RFPs?
Yeah, so we released the RFP, and it was out for a little over a month, I believe, and we just got our responses back, so we're in the review process.
Thank you very much.
Very good, that's fast. Okay, are we taking back, take back your name, and examples of regional parks, campuses, et cetera?
We assign that to Dave, since he's not here.
What was that?
I said, we assign that to Dave, since he's not here.
Okay.
It's fallen toll.
Comments about that? It's aspirational, but you're going to start working on it, right, so you can get your name back. Okay, all right, all right, dropping these from focus, we're trying to prioritize. Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bana asked about the lobbyist, the lobbyist is on here, it's under improving mer, it's under, it has, it's, it's at the very end of improving public safety.
Great, thank you. May I, may I have a suggestion for the topic of the next set? Instead of revitalize existing and a small business, can we say revitalize existing and attract new businesses? I think we should attract new businesses of all sizes.
So the clarifying piece is revitalizing-
Existing and attract new businesses.
And attract-
The next section is all about attracting new businesses.
Well, that's the, oh, but you wanted up in that section, revitalize existing and-
But, so the next section is all about attracting new businesses.
Right, there's a whole section on attracting new business.
Okay.
Where is that? Now, where's the attracting part that Councilmember Bana is trying to get in, that language in?
Create and re-envision infrastructure to attract new retail and manufacturing infill developments and new customers for existing Richmond businesses.
But I don't hear that-
Attract new retail and manufacturing developments.
So what we are saying is that in the second bullet point, that part of new businesses is part of that, so that is not necessary to put it in the, in the existing and small businesses point.
And if people want to revise the language here, feel free.
Okay, well, that's what we're doing right now, and I was just trying to find, and Councilmember Robinson, that was helpful, because I was looking for that attracting part that Councilmember Bana-
So, and that one, if you could add, it should read create, and, no, the bottom one, yeah, no, yeah, envision infrastructure to attract new businesses and new, the rest.
Attracting new businesses.
And new what?
And new retail and manufacturing infill developments. Thank you.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, pushing on. Supporting small, we dealt with that, right while we jumped down. Permitting inspections?
It's attached to a bigger bullet point.
Richmond permitting inspections, is that an aspiration?
It's attached to the line up above, revitalize business, i.e. facade improvements approved interface with the city of Richmond permitting inspections.
So you want to move that up?
No, he was just reading the second line only, but it's attached to the first line right above that.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, no, it's all part of that, yes.
We would like to see-
Is that aspirational, or is that in progress?
We need funding for facade improvements.
Yes.
It is something we would like the council to consider as part of the ARPA funding, it's something we had with the redevelopment agency, but funding is needed to make facade improvements or provide low-interest loans or free grants to property owners.
Lena, is it included in the TCC grant, though?
In the TCC grant, we do have a bi-local campaign, as well as to do facade improvements, but we need to do match funding as part of that.
So is your recommendation for council to consider it with ARPA?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson.
I would like to propose that we split this one, this came as one, one item, and I would actually propose that we split it into two, because I feel like the facade improvements is one particular thing that has to do with, like, making a business attractive and helping a business develop, but the other one really has to do with the interface with the city and permitting inspection, it's a whole other body of work, it's really different body of work, and so although it came as one item, I didn't want to, I didn't want to change things unless it was, like, literally repeating the same words, but I think this is one that I would like to ask if we could split it.
I would like to-
Process suggestion, yes, and comments on that?
Take it back on that suggestion, make it three. We realize IT improvement is needed to expedite permitting inspections, everything, so there is an IT component to that, maybe the third one.
There is an IT section that, that contains that, it's just not here, I guess we could re-copy it from the IT and put it in here.
Okay.
Is there consensus, here, there's consensus, moving on. The next aspiration?
I think the-
I'm sorry, another comment, Lena, I'm sorry.
Improving the interface with the permitting and inspection, I will say that is in progress, because that is one of the things we're working on with IT right now, is to improve our online permitting system.
And then Lizette has noted here several times that blue dot implementation to help streamline communication with small businesses is, in the notes we have from staff, that that's in progress.
Okay, all right, moving on. Where is our next aspiration? Okay, connect communities to keep revenue enrichment. Is that aspirational? Is that in progress? Where is it, what is it?
I would say it is in progress, because for the first time, the city manager agreed to participate in sponsoring an event that is on the other side of the freeway to bring communities together, so hopefully the trend will continue.
We could partner also bringing, that could also be with the bi-local campaign, so we could merge 52 and 58.
So that is in progress through economic development? I'm not, I'm not changing them, I'm just saying, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
That is in progress, okay. Improve economic development process for local businesses? I'm sorry.
I would, I would agree, I would like to move or propose that we combine those two, because they are a part of the same thing, right?
Connect and improve, connect communities and improve economic development.
The bi-local campaign and the connect communities to keep revenue enrichment, they're, they're a part of the same thing.
Comments? We're good? Okay. The next aspiration. I thought we passed the, improve economic development process to support local business. Is that aspirational? Are we doing things around that now?
I would like to ask, is this not something also that has to do with improve the interface with the city of Richmond? I don't know, like, who put it there, but I would like, nothing?
Yes, but Lizette is also, Lena, do you want to talk about the blue dot, or?
Well, I was going to comment on the improvement with the city and the support of new and local businesses. The city license and business department has actually started a campaign where they go out to local businesses and offer to help through the business license process, and they also have the ability, new businesses or local businesses have the ability to call and make an appointment to come in and walk through the whole process of getting a business license, so there's a lot of interface going out into the community, as well as providing support within the city to assist small businesses.
Councilmember Robinson.
So I did want to make a comment on this, this wasn't one of my items, but I was just at a neighborhood council meeting the other night, and a business- at a neighborhood council meeting the other night, and a business owner who has been in business in Richmond for over 30 years brought up that, you know, although he participates in the online bidding system and what, he's gotten one contract in those 30 years, and wondered, you know, what was going on? He felt like, he felt like it was discrimination. And, and, and so when I hear that, I hear, you know, what is the disconnect there that we have, this long-running business in our community who feels, who keeps applying for and trying to get, you know, businesses to do what he does for the city, but is not getting traction. One, and it was a very small contract in the hundreds of dollars in 30 years, and I don't think that that's uncommon. I've heard it from other business owners, and so I wonder if there isn't something more, not just applying for business licensing, but talking about, like, the bidding process, like, how, is there a support that we can offer to have businesses that, you know, supply different construction things or whatever, who are existing in Richmond, help them to understand those processes so they can be better competitors in, on those bids?
Absolutely, and, and we currently, through our RFP process, do provide meetings for potential bidders to come in and ask additional questions, but there's always room for improvement, so I would encourage everyone to ask them to call in. There's a mechanism where, when the bid is open, you can submit questions, and then they're, they're answered for everyone, or they can make an individual appointment with the contact person that is soliciting the bids.
Counselor members Zapata and Counselor member Willis.
Just to provide a little more clarity, this was my item here, I believe. I sit on the Economic Development Commission, and the, one of the questions, or I think a process improvement, is making sure that we go to the small businesses that don't even know that we provide services to them, right? They don't even know to be part of the bidding process. I've, we gave out lots of money a couple months ago for someone, and they were not on the list because they passed away, so their business missed out. But, so there's opportunities there, even just with the small businesses. I think that, and the Economic Development, to credit, the Economic Development Committee is working on a project to go door-to-door to every single business, but this is important to have as one of our goals in case we need to put funding behind it.
So this is in progress?
Yes.
I was going to say, I know there's some things you're doing around economic development, more than just the helping with the business license, and if you are okay, Counselor Willis, I do think Counselor Miss was trying to get a word in edgewise.
Thank you.
Just kind of like making a comment that one of the things to really know about the equity in procurement and how we are doing in contract, I was just talking to some people to do an study that really shows the equity lens of contracting in the city. So we, we will know how much percentage of the money goes to a, a small business, woman, or BIPOC community, so then we will have the data. I don't know if, Nanette, we had that data right now, where we can say 10% of, of the contracting funding goes to this, or 50% goes to that.
No, we don't have it. The, the affiliate has been helping with the outreach and has agreed to do so quarterly, but we have a vacancy in contract compliance, now that Gina retired, that we're trying to recruit for.
Counselor Willis, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Bana.
Yeah, I guess on the RFP, what you described in that, that's just another one of those things where I just want to follow up and just be like, how does that process work? Because in my brain, I'm like, if I were a small business and an RFP went out, how would I know about the RFP? So I don't know if we need to necessarily get into it now, but I would like to know how that process is being advertised, or how is it being publicized, and even do some of these small businesses know that these things are out, and are they just missing the mark? So where you said is there room for improvement, I just want to know how it works.
Absolutely, so there's, there's a bids online, so anyone that is interested in conducting business enrichment is able to sign up under their subject area, and when bids that they might be interested in, when RFPs go out, they're notified. But to your point, to everyone's point, there are probably small mom-and-pop businesses out there that don't even know to sign up, to be notified, so to Counselor Zapata, Counselor member Zapata's point is that we're going to be doing door-to-door outreach within Richmond to let people know what our services are, how can you do business enrichment, once you are selected to do business enrichment, what is the process, we will be able to help you through that process, so that's, that's what we're going to be working on in the near future.
Final comment, yeah, thank you for laying that out, and what I was going to say is, not everybody uses online, so just trying to accommodate those who are anti-cure.
I still like getting cards.
Yeah, exactly, you know, like, I don't want an email, like, I want to have a conversation. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Bana, and then I think Counselor member Robinson.
Yeah, in my conversations with the offshore industry, the offshore windmill industry, I discovered that for federal grants, a lot of times, a city needs to have a disparity survey, and I'm suggesting that that's something that the city of Richmond should do, so that we can actually see how, how much disparity there is in terms of how the city uses money.
Contracted, particularly, I lost track. Counselor Bana and then Counselor Robinson, I think, right?
Thank you. I would love to follow on what Mr. Mayor just said. I, I think one of the things we need to add here is a main bullet point about data collection and presentation. The city staff may have the data on the number of high school students who are not going to college who have no jobs. I don't. I think we should have such data. Number of people in poverty, number of women who's, who have no job, young children, breadwinner is incarcerated. What is the city doing for it? In order to understand what the problem is, we need to have a good picture, so I would like to add the main item, data collection and presentation. I think it's, it's definitely worth the money, so we know what the problem areas are, what the extent and dimension of the problem is, so we can set our priorities correctly. If you don't have results for this year, it's okay, at least we have it for next year.
Okay, we will capture that. Counselor member Robinson?
So I would like to say, I think that that data is, is out here, and a lot of the different city departments are...
In different places.
Are using it in order to inform their work. It's included in grant proposals that I've seen, it's there. What we don't have, I think, is a regular process where that gets communicated to council, especially at the moment when we need to be making important decisions about where resources go. I think what I would like to propose right now in this moment is to add an additional item, that is, you know, to either bring back if it existed before.
I'm sorry, bring back what?
So I'm, I'm, this is my item that I'd like to add. I'd like to add an item if people are in agreement, to bring back if it existed before, or create an annual report on kind of equity in the use of public resources, so that we can actually have a report that tells us, you know, how many small businesses, how many big businesses, how many BIPOC businesses got what amount of money, and we get it on an annual basis, so that we, we know how we're doing, and if we need to apply more resources to make sure that we're kind of equitable.
I'm sorry, I don't think that captures everything. I think it should be a separate item, and it should be the status of the city, and business is a part of that.
Right, so I am talking about the item that we're in right now. I do agree that we need it for the status of the city report, and I think that that could be in the section number five, where we talk about processes around staffing and whatnot, but in this particular area where we're talking about business and improving small business, I think it would really help us to understand where we are with businesses.
Okay, we just added an item. Was there need for some clarification?
I second that.
I think Caesar...
Can I clarify a question? Sorry, and Nanette, not to put you in the spot, sorry, but do we have a equity purchasing policy? One, two, if I'm a bidder online, what data are you collecting from me and my company to go with what, the data request, so, and I don't know this, I don't know if when you go on there, you say, I'm a certain type of person, certain type of business, here's who we hire, et cetera, my internal business practices, so that way we can then have that data. I think that's where we're trying to go. Other cities have equity purchasing policies, and maybe that's something we might be missing if we don't have it.
I'm not certain about the equity purchasing policy, but I do know that that data is collected through the bid solicitation and the proposals that are submitted, like WBE, how many, how local hire, we require local hire, things of that nature, so that, that information is included when we present the recommendation to council. We could provide that extra data, because we do collect it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, we did agree.
I think we need to kind of a formal, if people are okay with adding this.
Before we go, and I'm ready to go there, because what we agreed was that for this process, we were basically doing clarification. What I heard was a new item, and to make our process open and inclusive. Are there any comments? And I thought Counselor Bana had some comments on the recommendation of the additional item, and I just want to make sure that we leave space for if you had any additional comments on that, because that's a new item. That wasn't a clarification.
I know, I suggest that the new item that is larger than its scope and includes this one, and I don't know why my fellow council members don't agree to that and insist this one should pass.
So I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're saying we don't agree. I think that there's a whole section on improving, like, the internal infrastructure of the city, and I think that that item would be better under, under that category, because that has to do with, like, giving a report on the state of the city with all of these data and everything. That would be better, better suited in that item, rather than the item around supporting small businesses.
Okay, but I want to be clear, and maybe I misheard. Did we add a new item up here? And if, did we?
I would like to add a new item.
But did you?
That is aspirational. We did not, because we haven't gotten...
But I thought, maybe I misheard. I thought I heard somebody say they wanted to add an item, and I thought we put it up there. Did I mishear?
It's on there already. He already typed it in.
Okay, well, I want to know, okay, so what is that new item? Present, develop an equity use report data regarding small businesses enrichment.
And I would say an annual, you know, kind of instituting an annual report.
Okay, are we in agreement? We're adding that now. Everybody's okay. All right. Okay, we'll make sure all voices are heard. We don't have to agree, but they all get heard. Now, did you have a further comment?
With the acknowledgement of what Counselor Bana said, I think we can bring up her point. Make sure we don't lose her point, but it sounds like that point might belong in a, in a different section, whereas citywide versus just the business?
Thank you, yeah, I think it would affect our decisions in all areas.
Okay, all right, we're good. Where are we on aspiration? And in a minute, we're going to need, we have a lot of inspiration, and we have a lot of aspiration, and in a minute, we're going to need some rest. Where are we? Here's one. It's hard standing up here for an hour and a half.
You have a lot of perspiration.
Forty-five minutes. Where are we? Okay, we're now at counseling and technical assistance capacity building and marketing support for small businesses. Yes. Well, I can't, no, because if I, actually, I'd be able to see better, too. Brilliant, Counselor. That's, I just, geniuses in here. You make this work, oh, God, it feels so good to sit down. I can see better, too. Okay, where are we? What are we aspiring to do now?
I'm wondering if that goes combined with bullet four, which is improve economic development process to support local business. I wonder if they both go together.
Okay, there's the process suggestion, and putting that with, say that again?
With bullet number four.
Okay.
Improve economic development process to support local business.
Okay. Consensus? Everybody's okay with doing that?
So I actually feel like it's more item number one, the facade improvements, because this is something that is giving individual capacity building support for businesses. So if you looked at the ARPA report, businesses reported that they didn't have a lot of access to, like, like, the PPP loans and things like that, because they didn't have, like, accounting systems in place, and so they couldn't run their books to be able to apply for PPP loans, and so they were left out. They also said that they needed capacity building support for other things, like dealing with the taxes and dealing with other things, and so that is kind of in that same realm of facade improvements, where it's helping to strengthen a business, and it's for an individual business, not so much a part of a development process, like, being able to be a part of economic development and get a bid and get a job, you know? I mean, it's, it's related, but I think these are particular in strengthening capacity building.
I, I agree, yeah.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
We're good? Okay, very good. And the next one is?
We're going to give him a second to put that in there.
Okay.
I'm wondering if that last one there, or actually, now that things moved up, oh, support small business, increase access to capacity and capital, does that also go to the top one?
I think so.
Because that's what we're just talking about now?
Yes.
ARPA, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the last bullet point goes up to the top as well.
And here's where I'd like to make a comment, if it's okay. I feel like, you know, I think when we had our present, a great presentation from the Economic Development Department, and we heard from Lizette, and we heard from Nanette, and we, they have all of these aspirations. They, they have these things, they, they want to do these things, but the current staffing doesn't really allow for it, and the current funding doesn't really allow for it. So although that these things are in the, the work plan, it, there isn't actual staff hours and funding to support, and so that's why I kind of debated on whether or not to put it as aspirational or in progress, because in terms of the work plan, it's in progress, but in terms of resources, it's aspirational.
One of the things I said to you at the last meeting, and I am sensing it even more, you are really doing a lot of work toward the strategic plan. You're doing a lot of work toward the strategic plan, because that's where a lot of this stuff is going to lie, ultimately. Not your goals, and not your principal objectives, but a lot of what you're calling out is aspirational. Those are part of the larger strategic plan, and you're doing a good job moving in that direction, but in the meantime, I'm going to move you on this one.
And before we move on, I think the bullet point that you're on now, which is, the fourth bullet point is not A, it's an IP, improve economic development process to support local businesses. I think that was supposed to be IP. I think the A got carried over from the other item.
Okay, we're straight?
I'm not.
All right, we're going to do, how many more of these do we have to do?
This is the last bullet point for goal number one. We're only at...
We're making, we're making fabulous progress.
Are we at goal number two?
We're at goal number two. We're working our way through economic development.
Let's keep going, okay. All right, now, wait a minute, we've still got a lot of As up here. We need to figure out quickly where they're going. Developing entertainment and arts district along McDonald Avenue.
Can I add something to an IP there, which is an aspirational, I think? Under finalizing the Green Blue New Deal, and this is something that the Economic Development Commission is working on, I mentioned it to Councilmember Zapata, who's the liaison, but it's a, consider a sustainability business expo. So that would be part of the Green Blue New Deal, but it hasn't happened, but it would be a good thing to attract sustainability businesses. So could you, whatever, maybe just say, and consider a sustainability expo?
Will you be open to having that be a second, a second bullet point, maybe?
Or maybe a second, a bullet point under finalizing the Green Blue New Deal?
Yeah.
If you could indent, under finalize the Green Blue New Deal, and say, consider a sustainability business expo.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, and then Counselor member Jimenez.
Actually, Counselor member Jimenez.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I think, like, maybe we can say finalize and implement the Green New Blue Deal strategies.
Sure, sure.
Finalize and implement. Okay.
The Green Blue New Deal should also be under the port.
The port.
The port, and, and there's, and there's other items under the Green Blue New Deal which, which are under other things, such as electrify the ports.
So we're going to move that?
Well, I say, I say, copy it there.
Okay.
You know, because the Green Blue New Deal is actually more than the port, but it's a major part.
Sure, okay. Counselor member Robinson?
I don't have to say anything more. That's what I was going to say. I'm saying it's more than just the port.
All right, okay.
more than just the port.
All right, okay. All right.
And before you move it, the consider, consider, consider a sustainability business expo. I think that one will have an A.
Yeah, not an and, just take away the N D.
Well, an A there, but also at the A at the end, so aspirational.
Oh, yeah, an aspirational. That's what it is.
Two As. All right. Okay, and the next down, no, I'm skipping. Develop entertainment and arts. We did that already. Didn't we do developing entertainment and arts district along McDonald? We didn't, is that aspirational?
We did housing.
There is a big article in Today's Chronicle. Some fabulously rich person gave financing support for creating and enhancing arts districts in business areas, particularly small business areas. And I know when I interviewed several of you, that came up, not in the way I just described it, what's in the Chronicle today. But that's one, and I think it's up here, well, it is up here, as one of the things that you're interested in doing is making arts an integral part of your business revitalization and business districts. Okay. So is that, we said that's aspirational, right? Okay. And then downtown revitalization.
Do those two maybe go together?
Yes. And is downtown revitalization aspirational? Aren't you doing some stuff now?
We are.
On that line item, we noted that the Main Street Initiative, that staff works collaboratively with the Main Street Initiative.
Under downtown revitalization?
Yes.
I think we can also add MetroWalk as well as.
Twelve to McDonald.
Twelve to McDonald would be two key projects.
Yeah, it's under item thirty-five.
May need some expansion, but is it, it's in progress?
Yes, they are in progress.
I thought so. Yes, okay. Okay, creating commercial neighborhood hubs.
So with this one, I think the, the zoning allows the creation of these small neighborhood serving districts, mixed use along major corridors. So I think with this one, we would need to better understand what role the city wants to play. I think in terms of land use regulations, we allow for it, but if additional incentives or city interventions are needed, then resources would need to be added.
And that's why it's aspirational?
Yep.
Well, for some of these, though, you may, after further consideration, decide that some of these should be moved a little bit higher. It's not clear to me. Are there already neighborhood hubs, commercial neighborhood hubs?
Essentially not.
Okay, so it is created.
I, I think this would be like a whole process, where we would actually need to identify where they possibly could occur.
Sure, you don't have, you have a designated.
And then, you know, have like the staffing support to, you know, help attract.
Strategic plan, a strategic plan. Okay. What's the next aspiration? Enhance improvement, improved shopping districts, and there are several, Hilltop, Twenty-third, San Pablo, McDonald. Is that aspirational? Are we doing anything now? Aspirational, I guess.
I think for Hilltop, we're working on a specific plan that we've received funding for. I think Twenty-third Street, you know, we've been looking at different streetscape improvements that could be done. However, you know, funding, and I think we'd have to sort of revisit that design with the merchants. McDonald Avenue, obviously, I think in the downtown revitalization, there are streetscapes that could help contribute to that, but funding would be needed.
So is that one aspirational, though? This is enhance improved shopping district. Is that aspirational, or are some things already happening in that area that need to be enhanced?
Councilmember Robinson, then Councilmember Willis.
But I think this whole section has a whole number of things, where there's bits and pieces that are moving, but they're not moving necessarily, except for maybe the Hilltop plan, in, in, in step, like in coordination with a completely articulated strategic plan. And I think that that's like the issue and the problem with it, is that like you, you make a little step forward, and it's years and years apart, and you can't quite see the whole picture coming together. So I think what we're, I think what we're, what different people, because different, different council members have put forward these different phrasings of, I think they're really the same thing, is what we want to do, I think, is maybe prioritize, choose a strategy, and focus on it, and come up with a concerted plan that we direct resources to, to, to have it be like, not just streetscaping, not just housing, not just business development, but all those things in one place at one time or over a particular period of time.
Councilmember Zapata, I'm sorry, it's still coming. Councilmember Zapata.
Actually, it was Councilmember Willis and then Zapata.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these that I'm looking at now, it's like I would just identify them as aspirational, because there may be some work that is happening on them, but I can just say for myself personally, I don't know the vision, I don't know the details, I don't know the other input that's come in, where there's gaps or other community visions outside of ideas. So these are just some things that there may be like a general like, yeah, these are things we need to work on. But I think there just hasn't, at least for me yet, there hasn't really been a just focused conversation on the vision on how these things get built out and implemented, and having a public forum around that, too. So it does help to know that this is in like staff's scope of work, like, yeah, where you see these things as needing to move forward. But going back to the beginning of our conversation, even just picking one or two of these out of our overall goals that we want to work on. For example, for me, attracting a grocery store in different areas, because I know we have some grocery stores around, but that's still a need that community members are demanding. So how are we talking about that and building that out? I'll stop right there. So I would identify these for me personally as aspirational, just because we haven't talked about the details and decided which one is a priority.
Okay, and I think it's Zapata, and then Bana.
Zapata, Vice Mayor, and then me.
Vice Mayor, right into your hands.
Thank you. And this is for, for both us as council, but also for staff. As we're planning, because I'm, I'm thinking of, do we keep all of these items together, or do we separate them? Hilltop, Twenty-third Street, San Pablo Avenue, McDonald Avenue. And then I keep thinking of, how do we make them cohesive? How do we have them have synergies? How do we also have them be unique? And how do we learn from the past? Something that I heard of time and time again, the mall killed downtown. And through some of my campaigns in the past, I say, a vision and lack of leadership kill downtown. There is no reason why we can't have multiple business districts thriving together. We just have to have a vision to make sure that they're unique, that people can go to one place and say, I want to buy this, I go here. I want to go buy this, I go there. San Francisco, granted, bigger population, they have multiple business districts, but they're unique. And there's going to be a strategy so that as we create one, because we're not going to be able to have all of these at the same time. So we want to make sure that when one comes alive, the other one doesn't die. So as we're thinking of this, let's think of it holistically, together, and that when one comes alive, the other one's still thriving, right? And we're not killing different parts of our community just because we're refocusing somewhere else, so.
I think it's Vice Mayor McLaughlin, then the mayor, then Bana, then Robinson.
Yes, so grocery store attraction was something I put up there, and I still, I agree, it's a really important thing for our community to keep at it, keep trying to attract grocery stores. We have some, but not nearly enough. But I would like to add, like maybe perhaps an, an intention under grocery store attraction. This is something that should be in progress. Develop an additional farmer's market. I brought an item to the council in last year, and we had some staff discussions on it, but it kind of stalled. And so the idea was to have staff bring back some information about what it would take to have another farmer's market or something along those lines. So I would say, maybe this is in progress, or maybe, well, develop an additional farmer's market would be my suggestion to add. And whether it's in progress or aspirati, I would say it's probably aspirational, because it hasn't happened yet, but it was a direction to staff.
Okay, by consensus, then mayor, then Bana, then Robinson.
Yeah, to piggyback on both Councilmember Willis and Zapata, I do believe that we need to be intentional. And the reason that a lot of things that are actually happening feel aspirational is because there is not an, an intention behind them, and we jump on things as, as, as we can, and then, and then we drop off. But, but we need to make sure that things we jump on are jumped on with intention and with commitment to follow through. I, I think we do need to revisit the city plan so that we can reimagine the city of Richmond as something that can grow and grow sustainably, as Councilmember Zapata suggested, that, that when we develop one area, it doesn't kill another area. And we do that through intention. So there's a lot of things we can do, but it's going to require conversation with the entire city council to move that forward.
Councilmember Bana, then Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. Considering that we are going to hire a business director, I suggest we direct the staff to include all these among the first to-do things for the new business director and move on.
All right, that is a suggestion, and.
That was almost exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, all right.
I was like, the first thing we need is staff. And then, once staff are in place, we could ask them to come up with such plans.
Okay, we're going to go for five more minutes, and then we are going to take a break, unless there is a unanimous decision not to do so. Yeah, we, let's see if we push the button. Okay.
I, I think we've missed some of the As. We jumped down to grocery stores, which is great, but we missed a couple up above.
I suggested we include all those.
I suggested we include all those for the business director to think about, come up with a plan and bring back to us. I mean, there is no point in discussing them now. They're all connected, as you suggested.
And this is build social hubs, this is infield development, this is outreach and providing incentives to businesses, grocery store in a subsection, and no, doesn't, oh, establishing hotels to increase tourism, beautify entryways. Well, that may be more than the business. There may be planning and some others, too. But is there consensus that those are all aspirational? And working with the city manager will decide who's going to take the lead on that. Is there consensus around that? Councilmember Willis?
I'm just going to say, I was just putting a thumb up, thumbs up, yes. Providing outreach and incentives to businesses. I almost feel like Nanette kind of said they were doing that, more for small businesses, but otherwise, yeah, all this is a thumbs up for me in terms of aspirations.
So that would take, if there's consensus around that?
I think that, I think that we're, what I heard in Councilmember Bana's suggestion was that we kind of consolidate all of this under one bullet point that says that once proper staffing is in place, that we direct request staff to actually come up with a kind of economic strategic plan that incorporates all of these different things, that considers all of these different things, I should say. Because, you know, a comprehensive plan would, would, would include, you know, grocery stores and all the, all the different amenities that you would want to have in a properly developed, like, community.
So for clarification, which item do we start with in this consideration?
I believe, it's like, the, the only thing that I might put kind of separately is the finalizing, finalize and implement the Green Blue New Deal, because that's more of a, a kind of value structure, and then some directives around sustainability. But when you start at like developing an entertainment district, downtown revitalization, creating commercial hubs, enhancing shopping districts, and, you know, the building social things, the field development, like all of that stuff, all the hospital, the grocery store, like all the beautifying our, our entryways, all that could be a part of a comprehensive economic development plans for the city that identify where these social hubs could be, where a hospital could be, like all that kind of stuff, and, you know, create the blueprint. And, and I would just say one thing for, for plans, one thing that is great about a plan is that once you actually have a, an created and supported plan by the city, many different people can jump onto it and help advance it, and they can use it to help get resources and things like that. So, yeah, I think what we want is one bullet point that would encompass, have all these things be sub, sub points of that point, and it would be, you know, comprehensive.
Let's be clear about what we're saying is going to be one bullet point. It's going to go under one bullet point, so that there's, so everybody's on the same page, but what's going under one bullet point?
I think like the, the plan, I, I think like it should be new hire of an economy or economic development director, and he's, he or her or each, or they task.
We have an economic development director, just for the good of the order, and that's Nanette Beecham. So we're looking for an economic development manager, coordinator, and analyst, and port director.
Okay, so I'm sorry. But yeah, like the appropriate staff to, to task with these. And so then we can, we can talk about the timeline for that, right after that person is hired.
Okay, so there's clarity about what's going to go under that. We don't need to enumerate those here, or do we?
No, I, I, I think we just need to call out what's not part of it.
Okay, that's a good process suggestion.
That would be easier.
What is not part of that?
And finalize the Green Blue New Deal would not be part of that, since that's a separate item.
Yes, I think there's consensus around that.
And I think everything else fits under that.
Can you scroll up a little bit? Where is, where is the Blue Green Deal? Where is that?
So would development of Hilltop go under?
So we're taking that out?
Hilltop is part of the city.
And then, what, are we taking anything else out of this grouping? Because we're going to keep those subcategories, so we remember what it is we're supposed to be working on.
We want to add development of Hilltop District underneath this item. And I think the additional economic development staff isn't so much the item. The item is developing this, this plan. And a precursor to that would be having a fully staffed department.
Having what, I'm sorry?
Which is in another section.
A fully staffed department, which is in another section. It's already.
And you do have some items in there, though, that are broader than the economic development manager. Absolutely includes planning. Some of this wouldn't, but we don't need to get into that now. I think just keeping the groups together, and then the city manager can figure out who's got the.
So all that just gets moved over.
Okay, so are we in, is there concurrence? All right, so where does that take us?
I think you could also do the work regionally and building ties with UC Berkeley as part of the plan.
It might be helpful for the council to know that there is an economic development action plan that was developed by HRNA. So I've read that plan, and it's very vague. It doesn't really go into things like hubs, or, or arts corridors, or any kind of strategy or approach. It's just like, in general, we want to improve the economy, which is great. But I think that what we're looking for is a little bit more specific and inventive.
So, one quick, one quick thing, I think since it looks like it's kind of just thrown out there in the middle, maybe have develop an additional farmer's market as a separate one, as aspirational, as a separate bullet point under the development plan, yes. And that's aspirational.
Is there consensus? All right. Now, where's, we are now, where? We said we're going to try to get through the first goal.
We're at the improved cost recovery needs applicable department.
Improved cost recovery at each, yes, okay. That's not aspirational. We need to do that. That's, that's going to help support some of these things you have up there, where you need some more money. So we've got to figure out what needs, not here, but the staff would need to have to figure, figure out what needs to happen, because we can't leave any money on the table. Okay? So that's not aspirational. We're going to do that. And that is in. And that is in progress, I know that. I've been working with some of the finance people. But it's across the organization, it's not just business license tax, for example. All right, do we have any more aspirational? Strengthen grant infrastructure? Strengthen grant, grant infrastructure, build capacity to apply for and administer grants. But I thought that was in progress.
I think it's in progress now, with the Patrick Seals is now...
Defer it to the city manager. Councilmember Willis?
I just was waving at Patrick, because he's the one that's in progress, so thank you.
I think it's in progress, I've been hearing about it.
Well, thank you for catching my hand up, Henry.
Okay, any other?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Maybe also that will be in strengthening the infrastructure and the other, but it's in progress, but it's also, I feel like what I am hearing from the City Council is not one or two staff, but it's creating a grant department. So we are in the process, but I just want to make sure that we are not stopping right here, that the goal is to have a grant department that really help to bring more revenue to the city and add more capacity across departments.
And I would second that, that idea. That was the intention of this.
Are you modifying what's up there, or clarifying it, or does it capture?
Clarifying it. It says strengthen grant infrastructure, I believe that establishing a grant department would do that.
Yeah, so can we, can we put that there? Kind of like, be more specific about what is, what we are talking when we say strengthening grant infrastructure? Thank you.
All right. Now you, of course, may put various and sundry things up there. We're gonna come back, as Councilmember Cepeda said. At some point, we have to say, what is required for us to do these things? All right, and sometimes you have to spend the money to get money, but you know the point. All right, anything else up there is aspiration? We're at the end?
Yeah, we're at the end of two.
That's the end of the economic development section.
Where's, where's the end of this thing?
Right there, at the end.
That's the end of Goal Two, and then we start on Goal Three. We have Goal Four, we have Goal Five, and Goal Six.
Yes, six thirty.
Okay, all right. So what's the next aspiration?
I thought we were gonna take a break after we get to the end.
But you guys said you wanted to finish.
I think we wanted to finish Goal Two, so we did.
We did? Well, why didn't somebody say something?
I said it.
I'm tired, yes.
As soon as we finished, we said it.
All right. Could we, Patrick, pull back up our agenda with the time periods on it? So we can do a time check? No, it wasn't, yes. Now, it is six, what time is it, twenty something? Six twenty-six. And we are on Goal Three. We're starting Goal Three. So it's six twenty, what? So we have four minutes to get through the other three goals.
We can do it.
I'd like to make a proposal.
Somebody said that, somebody really said that. We can do it. Okay, where is?
Councilmember Robinson?
And Jimenez, Councilmember Robinson?
So, I'd like to make a proposal, because we don't have enough time to get through all these things.
You know that, you know that was a joke.
And I feel like it's important to hear from public comment, but I'd like to make a proposal and process and get feedback from my fellow council members. So one of the things that started to really become clear to me as I was working through, kind of trying to consolidate all these things, that so many of them are already in progress. And when things are already in progress, what is there to vote on in terms of priority? We're not gonna say, oh, you know, this thing is way more important than this thing, stop doing that. You know, we're not gonna do that, right? Like, that's not even on the table. And so I feel like what we really need to do at this point, at least with those first two bullet points, is that we need feedback from staff. And here's what I'd like to propose. I feel like a lot of the things that we have on our priorities list, which is great to find out, we have the same priorities the staff has. We're all working on the same things. But we would like for staff to actually help us create measurable, smart goals over, I would propose, a two-year term, because it would include the time when this council is all together as the same body for the things that are listed as in progress on the list. So I'd like to propose that we ask them to create smart goals for these things for what they want to achieve in this upcoming budget year, and what they want to achieve in, actually, yeah, in this upcoming budget year and for the next budget year. So a two-year term, but having goals for the short term, which is one year, and goals that are longer term for the two years. And that might not mean achieving the whole vision of one of these things that are in, but what can you achieve in the next two years? But I think it really should come from staff. And I think that they should be smart goals, meaning they should be, you know, measurable, and time-based, and all these things. Because they know their workloads. We don't know their workloads. We don't know what they feel is reasonably achievable. And we don't know what they're already moving, and what's close and what's not close. And so I would like to propose that we ask them to take the two different priorities that we've already kind of worked through, all of those in-progress things, and come back to us with two sets of goals. The long-term smart goals and the short-term smart goals for the two-year period. And they present to us what they feel is reasonably to be able to achieve in that term. And then for the rest of the time here, we use it on public comment. That's what I'd like to propose.
Okay, comments to that suggestion? Any, first of all, need for any clarification of what is being suggested? All right, everybody's, okay, I mean, understands what's being suggested. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Robinson, for that suggestion. I think like one thing that I will add in terms of that is also that some of these things that are in progress is also, has been really important for council, the council. Like, I will name two things that I think like we had been giving directions in different ways, putting, adding some money. Street calming issues. And we approved eighteen projects, we put some money. So that is something that I think like is in progress, but is something that we would like to see in the coming year, some of these movement. The same, the same with like the Community Crisis Response Program. It has been in the making for over two years. The money is there, and I think like we would like to see some of the implementation and, implementation and, like, really having up and running this program next year. So I think it's a combination. I agree that staff knows a lot of the workload, but it's also a combination of staff, workload, and clear directions that council has been given over this time.
Can I, can I?
Vice Mayor, and I'll come back, Councilmember Robinson, let's hear from Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Robinson could address my comments as well, since this was your motion. So I think it's fine. I think we don't wanna go on too long tonight, and we do have public here who we wanna hear public comment from. And I'm good with staff addressing Goal One and Goal Two with the categories of that you mentioned, Councilmember Robinson, which I can't recall right now, which are, which ones are, staff is already working on, and which ones are things that they, that we are aspiring them to work on. And I also agree that CCRP and the traffic calming projects, the eighteen projects are really important. We haven't gotten to them yet. So my question is more along the lines of, yes, let's have staff address Goal One and Goal Two and send their categories to us. And, yes, let's hear from the public tonight. But when are we gonna hear on Goal Three, Four, Five, and Six?
Okay, can we, since it's Councilmember Robinson's motion, can we allow her to respond to that now, and then hear from? Did you want to respond, Councilmember Robinson, just to clarify, for clarification?
Yeah, so I, I...
Oh, okay, keep it straight and order, but we're gonna allow, with your permission, we're gonna allow her to clarify.
I believe the proposal that I put forward around creating measurable goals for the things that we've already have, and we know are in progress, would actually do that, would actually create some accountability. Because we would be saying, you know, if we had gotten to improve public safety, which is priority number four, we would be asking staff to say, okay, with implement the eighteen projects, in two years, what can you do? And what can you do in one year? And what do you need to do these things? I think that that's what we would be asking from them. Because I think that there's, I don't believe the money that we have set aside yet are gonna be able to complete the eighteen projects. And so what we need to hear from Public Works is, what can you do with the money that you have? And how much more money would you need in order to complete the rest? And that, that is what we wanna ask from them, is to tell us that information, and then commit to what they can do, and be explicit, like, which number projects? What can you do in Year One, and what can you do in Year Two with the given resources? And what would you need to do to complete the rest?
Okay, I think it's the Mayor, then Councilmember Bana.
And could you, could you comment on my comments?
The other, the other part of it is, I didn't really address the rest of them, but in my brain, which I didn't get out of my mouth, I think we need more sessions to go through this process that we're completely, so we've worked through it all, and we feel comfortable with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Right, and the future sessions would come in next steps and final comments. So there are more steps that we need to take. But Councilmember, Vice Mayor McLaughlin's question was, when will we get the timeline and cost assessment for the other four items? And what I'm hearing is that we won't get them until after we've decided which are aspirational and which are in progress.
But I think that the suggestion is slightly different. But let's go to Councilmember Cepeda first, and then Councilmember Bana.
Actually, no, if the suggestion was different, then I misunderstood. Was your suggestion that the staff do all of the in-progress?
Beyond the ones we've covered today?
Yeah, I mean, I, we have been adding a little bit and clarifying a little bit, and I feel like that process is important. But I do feel like the staff is the ones who really know what's in progress and what's not, what's not. And so they could probably go down this list and just correct it. And then, and then maybe if there would be a shorter process then, where we're not going line, line, line and asking if it's in progress or not, but rather, we're just bringing up any, any issues or any clarifications that we might wanna make.
I'm good with that.
I think it's...
Yeah, I agree. Councilmember Bana?
Councilmember Bana, then Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. Since these sessions are for us to learn more about the way we think and build consensus, I suggest that each one of us go through the list, and we may change it later, but these six categories, and about our reasoning, about order of priority for them. So we can hear each other out loud. And after the process is done, we may change our mind based on what we hear from our colleagues. But I think it'd be nice to learn more about the way we think.
And I think Councilmember Jimenez was next. And then Councilmember Cepeda?
I think I agree with the process of, so then is staff looking at these, making kind of like quick clarification about is aspirational or in progress, because they know more, and then come back with a smart goal for all of these things? Is that what I am hearing?
I was actually only advocating for them coming back for smart goals with the first two that we've kind of worked through our process on, because we're, I think we're clear and done with them, and now we really need to hear what's realistically possible from staff. And so smart goals are appropriate for One and Two, but I feel like we still need to have some kind of a process as a council around Three through Six. So like, like Councilmember Bana said, we understand what people were really thinking when they're putting things forward, and, you know, we might change minds or not, whatever, all those things. I think that that's a healthy process. I just feel like it would be a lot shorter if we didn't have to go item by item, going, is it in progress, is it whatever, like, staff knows? And in fact, they've kind of already done it here, but we could just change it on the sheet, and then we can get that sheet.
All right, Councilmember Cepeda?
Thank you. I think this was said, but I just wanna reiterate it. What I, what I would like to see, and I want to make sure that I heard you correctly as well, Councilmember, that staff comes back and gives us a status, in progress or in action, a timeline of when each of these items are to be completed, whether it's three months, one year, six years, whatever it might be, so that we're aware of it. I would like to also see the staff needs. Like, maybe there's a project that says, we have, we need two staff, we have two staff, we're good to go. We need six staff, we have zero staff, we need six staff. So just so we know how to, how much staff we need for each one. And also the funding. If we can drill down in the funding, how much do we need? Do we need it from, can we get it from grants? Can we get it from federal? Can we get it from local? Can we get it through a new tax, et cetera? So figuring out the funding. And figuring out where in the process council's gonna give direction to help prioritize it. Because I think that might be something the staff might be needing. Out of, I don't know, just making up, looking at the list, we have maybe about a hundred line items. Which ones are important to us now? How do we help prioritize so staff puts their time in the right places? So figuring out, when does that come back to us?
Mr. Mayor?
Asking staff to do that amount of work for every item, I think is asking too much. That's why I think it's important for us to let staff know what's important to us. That way they can do that work for those items. Because I'm sure there's going to be more than, more that can fill the plate with what we come up with. And so, and so I think, you know, just doing the process of deciding what our priorities are will inform staff as to what, what they're capable of doing.
Councilmember Robinson?
So I have just like a, kind of a question. And this is something that I've been kind of struggling with, is, you know, as we saw, there are so many items that are already in progress. They're already assigned to staff. Staff are already working on them. So are we prioritizing their workloads and telling them, we don't think that's as important? Stop working on that, and focus more work on that? Like, are we, are we saying that that's gonna be the result of our prioritization? Because I think that things aren't, my fear is that, as I understand a lot of these projects, they're not always linear, right? Like, something may have legs for a while, and you're able to move it in a particular way, but there's external factors that are moving on it. So you might be juggling a couple of things at a time, because things kind of stop and start, and stop and start. And so I just, I just wonder, are we really saying, for all these things that already have staff assigned to them, that are already in progress, are we saying we're gonna prioritize those things?
Mr. Mayor?
I would say that, yes, we are. Because staff has already said that they have more work than they can do. So if they have more work than they can do, then we need to make sure that the work that is done meets our priorities.
Councilmember Jimenez? Pardon me, I just did something. My mother, who is deceased, would really not be pleased with this. And none of you have called me on this. I have a tendency to do this, and my mother would say, do not point your finger at people. I cannot help it. And none of you have called me on that. Councilmember Jimenez?
No, it's fine with me. In Colombia, we just do this. Where is Christine?
Okay. All right, I'll keep my hands back, my back. Other comments?
I think, I am just thinking about the process, and I just trying to make kind of like a middle point between what a Councilmember Robinson and Mayor Martinez are saying. I think like one thing is, we have been hearing over and over that staff is overwhelmed with a lot of things. Some of these things could be resolved by hiring more people, hiring more staff, right? So we want to hear that. So in terms of that, I feel like... So, in terms of that, I feel like priorit—prioritization of this could be also in terms of what it needs to be done so that we can move these things. Because I feel like so many of these things are moving, and they are going to continue moving. They are not going to stop because we hear say that this is not our priority, right? And somebody will need to step up because the work is moving. And that is the—the essence of man—like, the city. So, for me, in terms—like, to be able to prioritize some of these things, it will be important to also be more proactive, and have this—the—the staff to be more proactive in terms of, we—this is what we are doing. We can do this and finish the line if so, if we have this kind of support or staffing or—because the reality is that we—we hear all the time from the city manager that we need to be thinking about what we are asking because staff is overwhelmed with many things. So, I—I think like we need also—we cannot continue to have that same answer because this is not a way that we are going to be able to move things that we want.
Okay.
So, I—I just think that we need—we—it—it will need to be more proactive in that.
Councilmember Zapata, Councilmember Willis, and the mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Bana.
Bana, I'm sorry. Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we also need—because these are items that we've come up with, but we haven't stopped to look to see what staff is already working on. And I know that they're working on a bunch of different projects. So, if we're gonna prioritize these items, do we also want to bring those? And this is just a question. Do we want to make sure that we bring those other projects already in progress as we help either prioritize, or we just acknowledge? Like, I know that—the Kelly Sewer Project, for example, that's a big project coming along to us. That's not in the list. Because it's not—not—that it's not a priority for me. Not—that's not a priority for us. That—my thought of this was priorities for the future, not things that were already in progress. And we saw a lot of things in progress. So, do we want to take a step and say, okay, what else are you working on? So, as we are—because, Mr. Mayor, you raised a really great point. If they are working on something, and we want to help reprioritize, we'll need to know what they're working on, if we want to do that. So, I don't know if that's too much. I don't even know if that's the direction we want to go or not. But just want to put that out there. And Ms. City Manager has her end.
Council—oh, speak up, Madam—Madam.
I was gonna ask, um, through—the mayor as a chair, if we could contemplate having two more steps. So, one step could be that we reconcile the two documents. The document that staff updated, and then the document with the in-progress, and the—the other—the list from—that you all are working from today. So, reconcile those two documents. And then, could—to continue the conversation, maybe next week? And then, have a—a subsequent meeting where we, staff, can present, and we can provide information on what staff is already working on. And so, I think to get where the council is describing would—would probably take two more steps.
You heard the comment. And I think it's—
I—I'd like to speak—I'd like to speak to that. I think the purpose of this meeting was to establish council priorities. And I think that we are doing a very good job in considering staff's capabilities. And—and, you know, I think what the city manager suggested is a very good suggestion, and something that will inform how we prioritize, how we see the city moving forward. So, I do appreciate that, and—and I do welcome that. So, I'd like to see if the rest of the council agrees with that. If—if you do, can you raise your fingers? If not—
I'm sorry. Could you restate again?
Yes. To—to accept the offer from the city manager to—to inform us as to what they're doing aside from all the things that fall within the priorities.
I think the—you wanted a reaction to that, I guess?
Yeah. And—and the other thing I wanted—uh, I just had one other thing I wanted to say. I have worked with staff who—in—in my past, I've worked with staff who has always explained to me why things couldn't get done. And, uh, I believe we have a staff that is willing to tell us what needs to be done in order to make things happen. And so, as we move forward, that's the kind of narrative that we're going to hear. Because that's the Rosya Riveter Can Do frame of mind.
All right. I think that Councilmember—I've lost order now. Was it Bana, then Willis, or Willis, and then Bana?
Go ahead, Bana. Okay.
Uh, no. And what I was just gonna mention, just as an observation for me, is that the last meeting that we had, we—as you can see—also, thank you again, Councilmember Robinson, for doing this work. This is a lot, very extensive. But one thing that I, um, just want to observe is that we named a lot of things at our first strategic planning meeting. And a lot of these things are already in progress, as we mentioned. So, it's just really great to see that some of the visions and plans that we want to see get done are already being worked on. So, I'm just—I guess where I'm want to go to is just like, which one of these priorities do we want to follow—for me? Which one of these priorities do I want to follow up on? Get more information on, and just provide more input just to see if I'm identifying a disconnection between what staff is working on and the community's awareness on it, and where those needs need to be met and fill in those gaps? So, just wanted to say, thank you for staff, just for informing us of all the wonderful things that we're already working on, based on the—all the comments that we gave at the first meeting. It's exciting to know that this stuff has already been moving in the background, and these are things that we wanted to prioritize. So, just wanted to give an overall thank you to staff for that, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Bana, and Councilmember Robinson. And Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam— I—I want one of you to stand up here for two hours, and have a five-minute break, and then misidentify people's titles. Who wants to volunteer to do this? I'm gonna charge an entertainment fee.
Thank you. I—I would like to reiterate some of the stuff that my fellow council members said, that we set the policy, as you correctly mentioned, and the staff is to implement it. So, the staff doesn't tell us how to set the policy. They can advise us. And I think the best way they can advise, because it's like a vehicle in motion, and we ask them to steer suddenly, is—it would be destructive. They can tell us about the project's achievability. Like, some of them, maybe we're daydreaming, um, the—some of the projects. We're asking, you know, them, maybe there is no budget, no feasibility. So, uh, level of achievability and feasibility, I think, would be constructive feedback from the staff at some point. I don't think if hiring more staff would be helpful. It's not like the more batteries you, uh, put together, higher voltage you get. There is a structure. If the manager doesn't have the time to manage everything underneath him or her, it doesn't help to hire more staff. It damages the process for the manager. So, I strongly believe we need to work with the city manager, department heads, listen to their needs as well, how they want to structure, how many people they want to hire, instead of forcing them to hire more. If they need to hire more, they should hire more. But it's up to them to decide. Just, you know, adding to the quantity of the staff doesn't necessarily enhance the outcome and performance. So, I think we need a sanity check from the staff in terms of level of achievable—achievability, feasibility, with regards to what we do. And I really appreciate this. Uh, I think it's awesome. We should have—maybe we should have just gone over this. This is excellent. We should take time to go over this before the next one. But I would like to reiterate what I earlier said in terms of these six categories, our priorities, and our way of thinking about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson, and then we really need to hear from, and then Vice Mayor McLaughlin. We have public comment. And then, you need to say succinctly what is—we're doing next.
So, a couple of—a couple of thoughts. I feel like it's really—one of the things that I believe creates tension between the council and community and staff is not having clear agreements and setting realistic expectations that we can all hold each other to. And my hope is that this process would help us arrive at those agreements. To say that, you know, what—you know, what I would really like to see in this process is, yes, a reconcil—reconciliation of documents, so that we all know what's in progress and not. But I'd also like to see a clear statement from staff, from their perspective, of what they believe is truly achievable within a certain period of time, so that we can set that as a realistic expectation that we can hold each other to. And I think that that's not something that we, as council, can—can say. We can—we could do it, but it wouldn't be based on the knowledge of workloads and processes that are in place and—and things that are moving. And so, I would really like to continue to add that, and continue to have that in the next steps, is that our request from staff to actually put these items into some kind of—a—a matrix that clearly articulates a SMART goal, something that's time-based, measurable, um, you know, achievable, all those things that are SMART goals are part of it, you know? So, that we can say, yes, you know, the staff—we're not—we're not projecting something on staff. The staff is telling us, this is what we believe we can achieve in this timeframe. And then, we go, okay, we're gonna hold you to it. And that doesn't mean you're gonna get hung if something terrible happens. It's out of your control. You know? It just means that we'll check in on it. And then, oh, you know, X, Y, Z happened. That's not gonna be possible anymore. But at least we're checking in on it, and we have agreement. And then, I think that will—that will really calm some of the strain and stress that's been between council and staff. So, if we could say that with those 18 projects, that, just off the top of my head, that, you know, we only really have money for four. And those four are really gonna take probably four years, just off the top of my head. I'm not even—I don't know if this is true or not. But in this first year, we believe we could do now project number six, project number eight, project number—you know, start project number three. And—and then, we can say, okay, let's, you know, check in on that in six months. Let's check in on that in six months. I feel like that would set realistic expectations, that then we could stop, like, being on top of each other, wondering what's happening, what's happening? We—we have a clear expectation, a clear agreement. On top of that, I—last part, that I would love to us to walk away with and be a part of our process, is that, you know, as long as we're not going to assume that staff's gonna stop doing work, I think that prioritizing these things are fine, just so that people know what's most important to us. But as long as it's under the agreement that, you know, that doesn't mean if somebody actually works on something that's not a high priority, that that's not a super terrible thing, you know? So, those are—those are my comments, just really wanting to walk away with agreements.
And we've got three minutes. We have to hear from the public.
Yeah. Thank you to— Councilmember Robinson. I agree with what you're saying. And I was just gonna say something, taking off on that. In that staff, I think you said earlier that sometimes external factors come into play. And, you know, maybe—I'm gonna give an example of hiring. Maybe, you know, you put out an application for hiring, but it takes a certain length of time. And maybe you have to keep trying because the candidates aren't very—aren't good enough. And so, you know, maybe—
What are you turning me down?
Yeah. Right. Or they turn us down, or whatever. So—so, you know, we have to be flexible. So, maybe if we get the economic development, um, somebody for that on board right away, we can move forward the priorities for that. If we get the port director on board right away, maybe we can move forward those priorities faster. So, I think a certain amount of flexibility is important. And so, I—um, and I also wanted to state that, in addition to finishing this off with additional meetings, and, you know, after staff prioritize—or gives us their analysis of various things, um, we were going to talk a little bit about council processes, council's expectations, staff's expectations, our rules, our processes. I don't know if we're still planning to do a special—I would like to have maybe a part of a meeting, at least, about that.
And I think to that point, what I suggested—I knew you were—you have a lot on this plate—
Yeah.
That you finish that.
Yeah.
And then, maybe after—even after the budget, which is coming up very soon, tomorrow's June 1st. Because what you just described, and you and I have talked about that, the mayor and I have talked about that, that's a four, six-hour session. Okay. Now, Mr. Mayor and council members, with your concurrence, can we hear from the public?
Absolutely. Public comment.
Are there public speakers, Madam Kirk?
Yes, we—yes, we do. Yes, we do have public speakers. Speakers are David Hailvark, Elsa Stevens, Debbie Baer, Janet Johnson, and Susan Singh. Each speaker will have two minutes. Please come forward, in the order that I call you. David Hailvark.
He's gone.
Okay. Elsa—Elsa Stevens?
Hi. I'm not gonna take long. My—my ask is really simple. John Joya and Nancy Skinner found us $34 million to create a decent regional park in Point Malati. And, um, I really would like to be able to take my son there, and—for there to be, um, handicap accessible flushing toilets. So, please cooperate fully with the regional parks, and give Richmond a real Point Malati Park. Thank you.
Debbie Baer?
Hi. I have a few things to say. One is, I just want to say to Councilmember Banta, drugs are not the problem with homelessness. Most homeless people are working, and the majority are not on drugs. And the problem that causes homelessness is poverty. So, poverty is what we have to work on, which is—and—and before we think about drugs. Because it kind of reduces them to being less than us, and they're not. And I'm sure you didn't mean to do that, but it—it's how it hit me. And then, um, I want to just speak up for the idea of the timeline in terms of—just a general idea, what can we expect in a year? What can we expect in two years? Because as a member of the public, I like Wendell Pierce's idea for the building—this building. Is that—I don't know if that's the 12th McDonald Street. It's sort of like, what happened to that? It seems like it's been six years ago. If we can know, okay, in about a year, maybe we can get the permit. In about two years, maybe we can finish the funding. Whatever it is, we know that it's gonna happen. And then, um, about hiring staff, I think, yeah. You can talk to the project man—the department heads. But it's the low-level workers who really know if they have enough staff or not. I mean, as a nurse, when we didn't have staffing in the hospital, the administrators didn't know that. We knew that, and we—we spoke to that. So, maybe talk to the unions more, too, as—as long as you're talking to other people. Because I think more staff often does help get things done. And then, finally, um, there's a broad topic of prepare for sea level rise. It's really complicated. And, um, we have a lot of what they call legacy sites here in Richmond, of which Zeneca is probably one of the worst. And—and with Zeneca, we have—we—we can't put people to live there. But with Zeneca, we do have a responsible party that has unlimited wealth, and we should stick it to them, and that is Astra Zeneca.
Thank you. Janet Johnson?
Yeah. Thanks. Yeah. Hi. Thank you so much. This has been fascinating, and I'm looking forward to the next episode. Everybody is—everybody is really putting their—their best brain to this. And, um, so, I really appreciate it. I have to say that the public participation part could use some work. First of all, there was— there was no reason, really, why this couldn't be in the council chambers. I think—I think we need to look at being a little bit more flexible so we can at least have—have video available in real time. Not to mention the fact that, without online participation, you're losing a lot of public comment. And, um, there wasn't even a sign over there saying that it was in the Bermuda Room. I had to whip out my laptop and go online to find out where you were. Because I just—you know, I—I've been kind of busy, and I—I just assumed it would be over there. So, please, work on that for the next episode. I wanted just to briefly mention that, um— I wanted just to briefly mention that I think it's really important that we put our resources into port modernization and electrification. And that we also need to put, as I'm echoing Debbie Baer, we need to put some, some serious resources into supporting the community's desire to clean up Point Malati because it's not just one of the worst sites in Northern California. It is the worst site in Northern California. What did I say? Oh, my God. Zeneca site, yeah, sorry. And yeah, we do need Point Malati as a park. Let's face it. So, thanks. See you next time.
Our next speaker, Susan Singh. And there are no more speakers unless David Hailvarg is back.
Mr. Hillborne does not appear to be here. Mr. Mayor, what would be instructive, I think, for the council since I hear the desire to at least have the staff do some follow-up work prior to your next meeting?
Well, the question would be to staff. Would staff be able to accomplish the work for a meeting on Monday, January 5th? I mean, June 5th.
Well, January 5th would probably be about right.
January 5th, I'm sure they could accomplish it.
Yeah, that would probably work. Madam City Manager?
It depends on if the council, the approach. There were basically a couple of different approaches that were discussed. And so, if the approach is that staff can basically take the list provided by Councilmember Robinson and continue to update three through six and put it in a matrix format with where we are, if it's currently in progress and what the progress is, we can certainly do that. It would be helpful before we create SMART goals for just areas one and two, if we could get through that process for all of them. So, then that way, we can better understand if the council does have specific priorities in each of the six areas, and then we can establish SMART goals for those. I think trying to establish SMART goals just for the first two would be difficult because we do have finite resources and we are very much focused on hiring. But, in the short term, we have to work with the resources we have at hand.
So, the, I think you heard the city manager's response.
So, is the council amenable to having another session January 5th, Monday?
January, yes.
January, boy. I really do want to belabor this.
The answer is no. People are still recovering from the new.
Now that we've agreed that January 5th is not a good date, can we consider June 5th?
June 5th. The mayor's calling for June 5th.
I will not be in town.
Okay, so, there's two noes. Well, the sixth is a city council meeting, so I'm sure we don't want to do it then.
Your council meetings.
What about June 13th, which is the Tuesday that we don't have city council?
What date is that, Councilman?
June 13th, Tuesday, June 13th.
June 13th is a suggestion?
I'll be out of town.
June 13th doesn't work. Is that a Tuesday?
There's no council meeting.
Oh, June 12th.
I have said to many of you, I have been around for a long time. I know which one vote is.
Okay, let's, let's do this methodically. June 7th, how many people can make June 7th? Raise your hand if you can make June 7th.
And the idea is that everybody is here.
I know, that's, that's why I'm going through this methodically, day by day, until we find the day where everyone's.
June 7th is on the floor.
June 7th, raise your hand, okay?
Can you make June 7th?
Okay, June 8th.
People are still.
Give us a chance to look at our calendars.
Okay.
All right, let's slow it down a second. June, June 7th?
June 7th.
That's the first one.
Okay, tick tock, tick tock.
Is anybody who cannot make June 7th?
Okay, yeah, raise your hand if you can't make June 7th.
Two can't make June 7th.
Okay.
Three can't make June 7th.
Okay, then, then June 8th?
June 8th. Can't make it.
Can't make it or a week?
Yeah, can't. Okay, June 9th?
June 9th. Anybody can't make June 9th?
What time?
Unless it's, yeah, I can't. I have afternoon meetings on June 9th.
Until what time?
I could do morning.
Morning.
June 9th for the morning? Anybody can't make June 9th in the morning? Morning meeting, what time?
Anytime, early is fine with me. 8:30, 9?
9 to 12?
Are we trying to get, because we have a lot more community than we did before. I think we're aiming for more community members, but in the morning, I think it might be more difficult for a community to join us.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, let's, let's move on to June 12th.
June 12th, can't make June 12th. Anybody cannot make June 12th? They're still checking calendars. One can't make June.
Depends on the time on June 12th.
June 12th, and what time would work for you?
Mornings, I work in the evening, so mornings.
And we were not wanting to do mornings so that we could have community participation.
But, if we have to, we have to.
I can make, I can make, I can make work arrangements. It's just noting that because it does have an impact. So, if, if it's June 12th, I, actually, it couldn't be June 12th in the evening if we did it at 4:00, so I could make.
At 4:00, you could do June 12th at 4:00?
No, if it is at 4:00, I couldn't on June 12th. Meeting conflict.
When, what time could you do?
I could do it anytime before 5:30.
No, I cannot.
Anytime before 5:30.
I can't do the morning.
Okay, 12th doesn't work, 13th doesn't work. What about the 14th?
June 14th?
I'll be out of town. 13th and 14th.
Okay, 15th.
15th out of town.
No, 15th I can.
15th you may. Anybody cannot make June 15th? And what time we're talking about again?
4 to 7?
4 o'clock?
4 to 7.
Okay.
What's the date, I'm sorry?
Is anybody cannot make June 15th?
June 15th.
At 4 o'clock, 4 to 7, cannot?
Several of us have a, oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, don't we have a Doria and Caesar, a recycle more meeting in the evening at 6:15?
That's on the 6th.
Oh, that's the 8th. And what are we talking about, the 15th?
June 15th.
I can do that.
Anybody cannot make June 15th at 4:00?
I have a meeting at 7:00, but I, I'll just show up late.
No, at 5 to 7, we'll see to meet as adjourned. Is it here or is it away from the campus?
It's in Marin.
Oh, okay.
But, I could show up late.
All right, okay.
Let them know.
All right, okay. So, we have a date, June 15th at 4:00?
June 15th at 4:00 p.m.
All right.
4 to 7.
All right, now, and we're clear on what we're doing there. I think we got consensus around that, I think.
Right.
All right. Any final comments? Mr. Mayor, you have the last word.
All right. I want to thank staff, community, and council for getting this through the first two. And hopefully, we'll be able to get through the next four much more rapidly than we did. So, once again, thanks to all of you. And a special thanks to Councilmember Robinson for doing all the hard work of putting this together.
And I hope you think that your work was respected. I think it was.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Meetings adjourned.